Ms. Tanner, can you please begin by taking the roll?
Yes. Basine?
Here.
Camson?
Here.
Clanton?
Present.
Gabriel?
Present.
Jordan?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Martin?
Here. Okay, before we begin, I just have a couple of comments I want to make reflecting on this past week. Primarily, last week at the public, City Council Public Budget Hearing, I just want to thank all of the citizens of Norfolk who came out and advocated for the Norfolk Public School Board's budget, our budget proposal to the city, and came out to support and advocate for us. I really do appreciate those who come out regularly and also those who take a chance and come out and feel so moved to speak out in public in support of us. And not just us, it's our libraries, reopening our libraries, our community centers, rec centers. We are all connected and we are all supporting each other in the providing services and growth opportunities and new experiences for all ages, you know, and particularly for our youth. And there was a lot of discussion about the importance of these, you know, these very important organizations such, you know, the schools, the libraries, and the rec centers and community centers. And how it, it's really, in my mind, it's the foundation for a great community. And Norfolk is a great community, but we can always do better. And I really appreciate everyone taking their time out of their, you know, out of their days to turn out and to support us and just keep praying that the City Council's listening. You know, we talk a lot about having plans. We have plans. We don't just talk. We actually have, we actually take action. But, you know, to really implement those plans, we do need the funding. And so, and so again, I just want to express my gratitude to our fellow citizens. Okay, so moving on to our agenda, we just came out of governance training for the past four hours. So we're moving into phase two, and that is our work session. So with that, our first item, agenda on the, item on the agenda is our update on the General Assembly budget.
Good afternoon, Dr. Martin, Mr. Jordan, members of the board, and members of our community. Our first presentation today will again be on an update on our General Assembly's budget recommendations and so, or recommendations we have around the General Assembly's budget. So I'll ask Mr. Jenkins to come forward, our Chief Finance Officer, so that he can provide an update to you. Jenkins?
Thank you, Dr. Bert Song, and a good afternoon Chairman, Chairwoman Martin, Vice Chairman Jordan, Dr. Bert Song, and members of the school board. This afternoon, I'll speak about the revisions to the state budget that impact our budget. Can you hear me okay?
What thoughts?
Last month, you approved the school board of budget as it was presented by the superintendent. At the time, we mentioned that the state budget approved by the General Assembly would provide $5 million more to Norfolk schools than was included in the budget. Since then, the governor approved the Assembly's recommendation with only minor language changes that do not affect the funding that we expect to receive. If we can move, right, thank you. The differences between Governor Northern's budget proposal and the one passed by the General Assembly appears follows. The hold harmless provision is a million dollars smaller. They replaced the funding for a 2% teacher bonus with a permanent 5% pay raise. This added $3.9 million in state revenue. There was a revision to the sales tax collections, which adds 1.4 million to our budget. And new state funding for specialized student support of existing positions adds 1.2 million. Finally, we see a reduction in lottery funding of $368,000. The total of those is an increase of 5.2 million to our budget. There were two state issues that emerged from the Assembly that don't affect our program. First, their budget includes additional counselors, or we were budgeted funds for additional counselors. But the NPS division-wide student council ratio already is lower than the new SOQ funding levels. So the change does not require a change in staffing. The Assembly also included funds for learning loss programs in the current budget, with a provision that the funds would carry over to next year. We expect to revise the budget next year, as we don't believe we'll spend these funds before July. City funding of schools is also a little better than expected. The most recent estimates included in the city budget was $375,000 more than was included in the school budget. Combining the increases from the state and the city gives us 5.57 million more for our budget next year. Our recommendations for the new funds are on the next three slides. First, we recommend increasing employee pay raises and increasing the starting pay for teachers to 47,200. While this is only slightly above our original proposal, it brings us closer to Virginia Beach, the current leader in the region. It also will ensure that we remain among the regional leaders in teacher pay going forward. Since the increase at the bottom of the scale affects the rest of the scale, the changes result in larger pay raises for all teachers. The proposal increases average raises for teachers from 5.1% to 6.1% at a cost of $1.5 million. We also recommend increasing pay raises for classified staff and administrators by one percentage point, a combined cost of $650,000. Other budget revisions include increasing the budget for debt service by $24,800, which is tied to the city's real estate tax collections, moving two special educators and two assistants from the Federal Special Education Grant to the general fund, as there's not enough money in the grant to absorb the additional pay raises. Moving, moving funding for educational planning and feasibility study at Booker T. Washington from the capital budget to the operating budget. This change moves $310,000 of costs and frees up scarce capital funds. Replace telephone systems at 11 schools at a cost of $480,000. We also recommend increasing stipends for extracurricular and co-curricular activities, as noted here, increasing stipends for identified VHSL league and middle school activities. These items were included in the fiscal '21 original budget, but were struck in order to address issues of the pandemic and the resulting lower revenue. Finally, we recommend increasing the annual budget for operations and maintenance by 1.87 million. This is necessary so we can better address ongoing building repairs and other related costs. It provides needed funding to keep our schools in a state of good repair. Appearing on this slide are impacts of our recommendations on the operating budget. If approved, as you see here, the operating budget increases from 462.8 million to 468.4 million. Appearing on the screen are actions that have taken place since you approved the school budget last month or that will occur before the end of the school term. First, the governor signed the budget bill, as I mentioned before, as passed by the Assembly, and there were no significant modifications to the education budget. City staff indicate that recommendations to the City Council for the school budget will align with the state budget. We understand City Council will take action on the school budget on May 11th. Most importantly, our Human Resources Department will soon begin work on issuing new contracts to teachers and other school employees. Our goal is for the new contracts to be available to everyone before the end of the school term. Accomplishing that goal will be more difficult if we delay action on the amendments until May 19th. So our HR staff can complete new and timely contracts without undue haste, we urge that you consider the, these budget amendments on the April 21st school board agenda. So that would be next week. Dr. Martin, this concludes my presentation. I thank the entire board for their time and attention, and I'll be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Does anyone have questions? Basine, go ahead.
Not so much of a question as a comment. I'd like to see somewhere in here where we take into consideration hiring a consultant to work on the pay and compensation study. It's been brought up time and time again. While I support the raises that are in here, I don't think we should lose sight of what happened to our teachers back in, what was it, mid-2000, when they didn't receive the wages and they were compressed and basically didn't get the raises that they were due, so to speak, to get. And our HR staff has indicated that they don't necessarily have the bandwidth to conduct a study of that magnitude. I think we should consider that having an outside consultant do that for our teachers and not just having the study done, but then to take action on it as well.
Comments or questions?
I'd like to add to that, please.
Yes, Dr. Bert Song?
Yes, I wanted to, yes, Ms. Smith, we had planned to do that. Moving forward, the administration has had that discussion that we do plan to bring in another consultant to help us move forward with all of, with the, what we need to do with the pay and compensation study to address the compression issue. Because you're exactly right, our HR staff has expressed concerns about their ability to move that, that work forward. And so we will be bringing in someone from the outside so we can better address those concerns.
But what is the timeline that we're going to bring someone in?
Well, Mr. Jenkins thought that he would start on that this summer, as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Dr. Bert Song? Any other comments? I'm sorry, I didn't see you through the plexiglass. Ms. Basine, go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to, I actually had a similar comment to Ms. Smith, because I do believe, I do recall Mr. Jenkins mentioning, you know, embarking on a study to really, you know, dive deep into assessing our compression issues and paying compensation. So along those lines, I support Ms. Smith's request. And to follow up on what you just mentioned, Dr. Bert Song, so we, we have the funds to, to do that study already, that's already included in the operating budget, is that correct?
That is correct. It wouldn't be, we would not need to ask for additional funding.
Okay, okay. So I was gonna, I was gonna make a similar suggestion, so, because that would be my, my preference would be to put the investment in that before any additional raises, although I wholeheartedly, you know, support raises for our employees. The other piece is also, it said here on, toward the end, the HR database. Let's see, school staff will begin HR database revisions. Can you elaborate a little bit on what that, what that is?
Those are just the changes that need to be made in order to advance employees' pay, pay rates so the contracts can be issued. So it's not, it's not technical, it's just the normal changes that would be made going into new contracts.
Oh, okay. So, and I, from previous discussions, I've heard some feedback about, you know, our HR processes and maybe the software and the database. And if there are, if there are areas that we could enhance or update so that our HR processes are more efficient or more expansive to allow us to do any type of analyses or assessment of our HR process, you know, I would like to hear more about that and that maybe that is also an area that we could invest some funds toward to improve that process.
I think the suggestion was not so much that the processes weren't efficient, but to make sure that there was time to do the work and that it was done methodical so that, so that we could get contracts out as expected.
Okay. And I, I don't mean that it's inefficient, but I think I've heard, you know, things being more manual, that things have to be manually processed. And if there's a way to streamline or make it electronic, that's, that's what I'm, what I'm referring to. And let me see.
Jordan, go ahead.
And I, whoops.
Can you hear him, or are you done?
I didn't hear anything.
Okay. Are you, are you, do you still have comments, Ms. Basine?
Well, the other thing I was, I was going to mention is that, if you remember, I had questioned, you know, the 11 PE assistants that were, we were using Essar funds for. And I wonder if, to ensure the continuity of those resources, does it make sense to now put that in the operating budget so that the Essar funds could be used for other pandemic-related expenses?
I mean, that's an option, I presume, but I mean, we're getting a lot of Essar and coronavirus funds, a whole lot. I mean, that's something that is a possibility.
Because that's something I foresee as...
I understand what you're saying. You're saying you would rather preserve those positions in the, in the operational budget versus funding them through what might be perceived as one or two-time funding sources?
Right, right. I mean... I'm thinking long-range planning, you know, what, what could we be using that for?
I mean, certainly, if we continue them past the time when the, those grants are in place, we will, that decision will have to be made, certainly.
And to be clear, if I may, Madam Chair, Mrs. Tao did an evaluation of this, and she assured me that we would be able to, in the future, absorb these positions. So we were very careful about putting positions in grants and then not being able to absorb them in the operating budget. So we did have that discussion, and we appreciate that concern.
Okay, okay, great. And then to that end, last comment is, so we did the gifted needs assessment, and there was, you know, some suggestion that we may want to do a deeper dive in evaluating our gifted academic programming service delivery. And, you know, if there are funds available to invest in that, I don't know if the administration is supportive of doing that more expansive evaluation. But if so, you know, I would support conducting that evaluation.
If I may, Madam Chair, yes, whenever the consultants from William &amp; Mary or the professors came in that, you know, helped to, helped to facilitate that study, we did agree at that time that we wanted to take a deeper dive, and we can actually absorb that cost through our Division of Academic Affairs. We don't need to ask for additional funding to be able to move forward with that. But we are certainly very supportive of that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Basine, go ahead.
Thank you.
Vice Chairman?
I just had questions around, clarity around what we're being asked to do. So we submitted a proposed budget to City Council. Based upon the schedule, they will approve a budget on May 11th. So are you asking us to amend our proposed budget on April 21st with the understanding that at some point after the City Council takes its vote, we would then have to come back and finalize our budget? Because I'm not quite sure I'm following what we're being asked to do on the 21st versus what we're going to be asked to do once the City Council decides its, its budget, which we're included in.
Okay, yes, sir, let me, let me clarify that. We're asking that on April 21st, next week, that you approve amendments to the fiscal '22 budget, as we have enumerated here. So there's 5.7 million dollars of budget amendments that we, that we quickly went through. So we, we'll ask that, that you consider amending the operating budget for those items. City Council, or the city staff, the budget director, actually, has told me that it would be in the best interest of the city if they align the budget with, the school budget with what's coming from the General Assembly. So they will, with or without your action, amend the school district's total budget to agree with the state budget. So there's five points, there's a little over 5 million more, 5.2 million more of state money. So they will adjust their appropriation to add that 5.2. What we're recommending to you next week will align perfectly with what they will, with what the city staff is asking City Council to do on May 11th.
Right, I think I'm following that, because when we were having the discussion before, and we were putting together our proposed budget, that was one of the reasons why I was asking whether or not we would include what we thought was being projected from the governor in our proposed budget. But our, the, the budget itself, in terms of what the school board approves that then provides the resources for the administration to take action come July 1st, that final action of the school board won't take place until after the City Council takes its, its action, correct? In other words, we know what the staff is projecting, but we don't know for certain what actions, additional changes, the City Council could determine based, until they vote.
Okay, I see what you're, I see what you're saying.
So we would, as I understand that the process that we typically follow, we submit a proposed budget by April 1st to the council. The council then considers our requests. They will take some final action, which then tells us what we have. And then if there are any adjustments that we decide to make on a final budget, school board's approved budget, we do that after the City Council votes. So what I think I'm understanding, and you're really asking us to just modify what we are submitting to City Council, but the final action as to what gets approved for, for action in the coming fiscal year wouldn't take place until the school board casts its final vote on the budget after we hear back from City Council.
That is possible. We're asking to amend the budget on the 21st that would exactly agree with what the city staff is recommending to the City Council. If for, if for some reason, City Council's approval is different from that recommendation, then yes, sir, you would, we would have to bring amendments to you in May. From, from what I'm hearing from staff, that their recommendation would be to revise the school budget for the additional state funding. And with the, the revenue sharing agreement or, or policy that we have, we don't anticipate that there will be changes in the city's revenue portion. So we don't anticipate there would be any difference between what you would be approving and what council would, would also approve as your appropriation.
Yes, sir, I think I understand that, I think...
So if, if there's a difference, then yes, sir, we would have to bring that, those changes to you after council meets.
Right, because the revenue sharing gives us predictability about what we would receive minimally. Nothing stops the council from giving us more than that. I'm just want to make sure that we're clear as a board that what, if we take a vote on the 21st, that is not the vote on the school board's final budget for the upcoming fiscal year. The final budget, as approved by the school board, wouldn't take place until after the City Council votes its ordinances telling the school system what the City Council has allocated to the school board. Correct?
If, I mean, that's, that's certainly, that's certainly something the board may, may wish to do. But I guess what I'm trying, what I've said is that the adjustments we're recommending are exactly what city staff is recommending. We're simply indicating how, or we're recommending to you how we think you should, we should spend the money. You can certainly deviate from that. But in total, we're both recommending the same adjustment. So we, we don't see that there would be any difference. And if there was, yes, sir, you would have, we would definitely have to come to you for that, for those changes.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, I think I understand what you're saying. So we're essentially sending a nod over to council before they, they make their final vote on May 12th, that we're making amendment to what we submitted to them, so it aligns with what they're going to be considering on the 12th. And then whatever happens, or whatever they approve, and of course, we got to come back and, and look at it, right?
We will certainly bring that to you if there's any, we'll bring it, we will notify you if you have any changes and if there's an adjustment you need to make, yes, sir.
But we've already sent something on, on April 1st, but now we're asking us to come back and make an adjustment based on some recommendations before council makes their final vote, right? Is that what I'm following?
I think I heard, I'm not, I'm not hearing real well from what you're saying, sir.
Hearing everyone saying the same thing.
Just want to, by, and maybe Attorney Cloud can help, but by law, the school board can, will not approve its final budget for the upcoming fiscal year, its, its spending plan, until after the City Council has voted its ordinances telling the school system what we would receive. What we're in essence are doing, or would be doing on the 21st, is amending our requests to the City Council for approval based upon these recommendations that you put forward, if that's the action that the board takes on the 21st. The City Council then, through its processes, at some point on May 11th, would then take action. And then it comes back to the school system, where then the school board makes a final vote on its budget based upon all the resources and the spending plan that we've, we've put together.
That's correct. The school board will, regardless, I mean, it may be that the council will do what you're indicating is expected. Regardless of whether they do that or not, the school board still has to finally vote on its budget after the council has voted on it. So anything prior to that is preliminary.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Mr. Jenkins, I appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Everyone's clear on what we, we will be voting on the proposed amendments at our business meeting. All right, next on the agenda, we have item 5.01, Special Education Annual Plan Presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair Martin, our illustrious Special Education Department head, Senior Director of Learning Support. Dr. Glenda Walter will be facilitating that presentation.
Good evening, Dr. Walter.
Good evening. Okay, everybody can hear me, great. All right, good evening, Chairwoman Martin, Vice Chair Clanton, Dr. Bert Song, and members of the school board. I'm pleased to present to you this evening the Fiscal Year '22 Special Education Annual Plan Flow Through Grant Application. The application is a collaborative effort between Learning Support, Special Ed Services, and the Departments of Budget and Accounting. It has been developed with intention to support the needs of special education students throughout the city of Norfolk. Before I begin, I would like to thank our Chief Finance Officer, Mr. Steve Jenkins, Ms. Pearl Toar, Executive Director of Budget, and Mr. Stan Hobbs, the Senior Director of Accounting, and their teams for all of their assistance in developing the plan, as well as Dr. Bert Song and Dr. Poehl for their feedback and support. I will begin by providing some background information related to the Special Education Annual Plan and its requirements to the board and for the public. The Special Education Annual Plan Part B Flow Through Application is an application for federal grant funding under the provisions of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act of 2004, commonly referred to as IDEA. It is required by IDEA, as well as the Virginia, Virginia Regulations Governing Special Ed Programs. Funding awards are determined by a formula that includes the division's annual December 1 child count. Thank you. Funding is contingent upon final approval and final award amounts. Therefore, adjustments to budget amounts may be required by VDOE at a later date. The funding flows through the Virginia Department of Education and Norfolk Public Schools, and it is an agreement between Norfolk Public Schools and VDOE. As required, the plan was presented to and reviewed by the Norfolk Public Schools Special Education Advisory Committee. Education Advisory Committee on April 1st, 2021, and the plan is reviewed for implementation and submitted annually to the VDOE. The Superintendent of Schools must certify the completed Special Education Annual Plan application and confirm the statement of assurances. Upon approval by the board, the superintendent certifies that Norfolk Public Schools will provide a free and appropriate public education for all of our students with disabilities in Norfolk Public Schools, that we will maintain individualized education programs, educate students with disabilities alongside their peers without disabilities to the maximum extent appropriate for each child, and develop policies and procedures designed to prevent over-identification, under-identification, or disproportionate representation, pardon me, by race and ethnicity of students with disabilities. Additional required components of the annual plan application include confirmation of any jail education programs within the city of Norfolk. Norfolk Public Schools currently has two teachers that provide services at the Norfolk City Jail for incarcerated youth with disabilities. The interagency jails agreement requires review triannually, and it was last updated in September of 2019. The plan also requires maintenance of effort projections, which requires that all school divisions maintain at least the same local and state funding levels as the previous school year. A description of the proportionate set aside amount is also included in the application, which describes the amounts to provide services for students who are homeschooled or parentally placed in private schools that live in the city of Norfolk. And finally, the Title VI and C grant funds, commonly referred to as Section 611 and 619, outline personnel costs that we pay for through the grant. The Department of Learning Support is dedicated to meeting the unique needs of students with disabilities and providing a continuum of quality services and programs from early childhood through pro-secondary. As of March 24th, 2021, Norfolk serves 4,389 students with disabilities within the school division. Special education flow-through federal funding is used to provide quality services to students with disabilities in the city, and serves to enhance a number of the division's drive for five efforts, namely, improving academic achievement, attracting and retaining highly qualified teachers and staff, developing, pardon me, and sustaining community and engaging stakeholders, and creating a culture of caring in Norfolk. Effectively realizing the division's drive for five requires that learning support maximize use of funding, departmental resources, and extend existing successful programs and services. In this respect, the department has identified several areas of focus that will allow us to support and enhance the overall NPS drive for five. Under the area of improving academic achievement, this includes a focus on closing achievement gaps in the areas of reading, math, and graduation for students with disabilities, increasing attendance and engagement, reducing suspensions for students with disabilities as well. Under the area of attracting and retaining highly qualified teachers and staff, this involves providing quality professional development for administrators and leading special education programs, providing targeted professional development for special ed teachers and paraprofessionals to include ongoing coaching and support, and increasing staff expertise in specially-designed instruction, high-leverage practices, and effective co-planning and co-teaching. And finally, under the areas of developing and sustaining community and engaging stakeholders, as well as creating a culture of caring in Norfolk Public Schools, this involves building knowledge around special education to promote positive parent advocacy by expanding our efforts and frequency of parent workshops, developing and maintaining a reputation as a collaborative advocate for students with disabilities alongside our parents and guardians and community agencies. I will now review the funding portions of the annual plan application. The Section 611 portion of the grant provides funding for what are considered school-age special education programs, specifically our compulsory education grades of K through 12 or postgraduate for students with disabilities, which includes ages 5 through 21 inclusive. The Fiscal Year 21 application funded the following full-time positions during the current school year. Those positions include 40 special education teachers, 75 special education paraprofessionals, one teacher specialist, four administrative assistants, and one special education administrator. The Fiscal Year 21 application and approved funds also provided monies for proportionate set aside or PSA services for parentally-placed private school and homeschool students, that's required by the regulation of all school divisions, and the required PSA amount is calculated by VDOE annually. The Fiscal Year 22 application that I'm proposing this evening maintains the above staffing levels, based on a level funding projection using our Fiscal Year 21 award Included on the slide is the budget table from the application for the Section 611 portion of the grant. VDOE requires that the application is submitted each year prior to their notifying school divisions of the final award amount for the upcoming year. As such, the application is developed using level funding projections from the previous fiscal year. The total 611 grant amount for Fiscal Year 21 was $7,297,251. Norfolk Public Schools used the grant to fund the special education personnel as previously described, and includes the required proportionate set aside funds. Again, all school divisions are required to set aside funds for parentally-placed private school or homeschool students, until the point that PSA funds are exhausted, but not beyond. 611 also includes mandatory comprehensive coordinated early intervening services, referred to as CEES, which I will discuss in follow-up slides. The 611 grant monies not earmarked for CEES or PSA include a total of $6,110,886.21. These funds are planned to provide staffing consistent with the Fiscal Year 21 application. $3,901,338.61 are for salaries, pardon me. $1,945,35.49 in employee benefits and other services of $263,148.21 are indirect costs. Indirect costs are charged to all federal grants to run grant programs and offset the operating budget. The monies go back to the district towards operating budget and assist the division with costs associated with running grants, such as overhead and facilities cost, processing payroll, developing contracts, or setting up requisitions, and paying the bills. The state sets the indirect cost rate, which is currently 4.5% and can change annually. After personnel services, employee benefits, and other services or indirect costs, the remaining $1,363.90 provides for materials and supplies purchased, including instructional or general supplies. Norfolk additionally outlines a portion of the grant funds for coordinated comprehensive early intervening services, referred to as CEES. These funds are mandatory set aside of Section 611 funds, and is based on identification of significant disproportionality in the rate of suspension or expulsion of students with disabilities by race, specifically Black and African-American students in Norfolk Public Schools. VDOE previously required that the funds be set aside and used primarily on students without disabilities in the general education setting. Recent changes allow school divisions to primarily, but not exclusively, use funds to provide intervening supports for students with disabilities. The Fiscal Year 21 CEES set aside funded several full-time positions dedicated to delivering intervening services for students. These positions included one CEES specialist, a CEES social worker, a CEES counselor, and 24 CEES paraprofessionals. During the current school year, implementation of the CEES program included the CEES specialist coordinating the implementation of the program and activities and interventions in 12 middle and high schools, primarily for students without disabilities in grades 6 and 7 and 9 and 10, under the supervision and support of an assigned learning support administrator. The CEES social worker and counselor provided support to identified students and families by working directly with the schools to develop intervention supports and strategies, family engagement efforts, and assisting with accessing mental health and community-based services. The 24 paraprofessionals provided support to referred students by building positive relationships with students and families, working with students in small groups or individually on academic and behavioral goals and supports, and participating in training to increase expertise in alternatives to suspension, de-escalation, social-emotional learning, and improvement monitoring, in addition to the provision of general and instructional materials that were provided in order to increase the capacity of staff to support the students in the general ed environment. The Fiscal Year 22 application funds proposed are planned to provide for the following full-time positions dedicated to the CEES efforts: a CEES specialist, a CEES social worker, and 12 CEES counselors. The 24 CEES paraprofessionals from the previous CEES implementation year will be moved to special education paraprofessional positions open under the 611 grant and operating budget. Planned adjustments to the CEES program for the 2122 school year are based on recently allowable changes in the use of the CEES funds and interventions by VDOE. Again, previously, VDOE mandated that CEES funds be primarily used on students without disabilities in the general education setting, despite the mandatory set aside being determined based on a disproportionate suspension of students with disabilities by race, specifically African-American students. Paraprofessionals previously funded under CEES will move back to vacant classroom and program positions funded by the general 611 flow-through grant or the operating fund and any added positions there. The onset of mandatory set aside in Norfolk Public Schools created challenges in maintaining fully-staffed paraprofessional positions in other parts of the grant and operating since CEES began. Proposed plan changes will benefit students with disabilities throughout the district's programs by reducing vacancies in staffing classrooms and programs with these paraprofessionals, who've also benefited from targeted and quality professional development and academic and behavioral supports. Their transition into special education classrooms or programs, in addition to the proposed changes to CEES staffing, are intended to provide improved services for a greater number of students with disabilities throughout the division. The budgeted cost of personnel in the proposed Fiscal Year 22 application for CEES includes This budget is based on staffing 12 CEES counselors with the school counselor credentials and training with an average of Step 5 experience, in addition to the CEES specialist and social worker. It also includes educational stipends for advanced degrees totaling $52,081, based on the minimum required credentials of the positions and funds for part-time pay, which includes $33,937.77. The part-time pay will allow for staff to participate in work or professional development activities and parent involvement and engagement activities outside of contract hours. $290,235.94 is the budgeted cost of employee benefits. The $25,894.23 in purchased services includes $4,000 for professional development registrations and opportunities for CEES staff, and the remaining is for contract services, which can pay for tutoring, presenters, and other services for students and families. The other services amount of $47,687.41 are the indirect costs budgeted for this portion of the grant. During the 202122 implementation, CEES will maintain a specialist and social worker, and funds will continue to be used for general and instructional materials and supplies. Again, throughout NPS's implementation of CEES, VDOE has not permitted the funds and interventions to be used to directly address the target population for which they identify the division. As a result, the CEES program itself has not reduced disproportionality and suspension for students with disabilities, as the VDOE parameters concerning CEES did not allow that services were provided specifically to those students. The proposed changes are intended to redesign the plan, so that we primarily, but not exclusively, focus on the populations of students with disabilities that have been identified for disproportionate suspensions or expulsions, and hire staff, specifically the CEES counselors, with training and competencies in academic career and personal or social development, which will allow students to receive direct support from staff with backgrounds in these areas, and better support overall NPS special education programs and students by placing those paraprofessionals, again, who have benefited from additional training and experiences, back into our vacant special ed classroom positions. In order to implement these changes, learning support intends to identify our currently-enrolled NPS students with disabilities by race, our Black and African-American students, that have disproportionately been suspended for 10 or more days in a school year, based on 1819 and 1920 data. This will allow us to develop caseloads and use of the CEES counselors, so that they provide direct supports to identified students based on this data, and also to continue supporting students without disabilities through a referral process. School assignments and schedules of the CEES counselors will be developed based on the suspension data for students with disabilities, and the referral process for general education students will continue to involve a multiple disciplinary team. We will also continue to provide professional development opportunities and workshops for CEES staff, school administrators, and parents and guardians. The final budget portion of the application includes the Section 619 funds for preschool services. During Fiscal Year 21, these grant funds provided for two full-time early childhood special education teachers and a full-time paraprofessional at Easton. The Fiscal Year 22 application maintains these positions. Easton is dedicated to early childhood special ed programs, but not all staff are funded through 619, as all school-age special ed programs are not funded through 611. There are 15 self-contained early childhood special education programs at Easton and one inclusion class. There are also eight ECSE teachers at Willoughby, four providing half-day programs, two full-day, one autism ECSE classroom, and one collaborative teacher. On this slide, you see the budget table for the 619 grant. The total budget is $258,095. This includes $137,958 for the personnel mentioned, as well as $78,617.48 for the employee benefits, $7,500 for contract services, and $23,228.35 for materials and supplies. This includes general supplies, instructional supplies, and technology equipment, and the indirect cost charges for this portion of the grant are $10,791.17. So this concludes a summary of the required components of the Fiscal Year 22 Special Education Annual Plan application. The annual plan is required for submission to VDOE by May 14th, 2021, and at this time, I recommend the school board vote to approve the Norfolk Public Schools Fiscal Year 22 annual special education application, following your review, and we'll take any questions you have to assist in that effort.
Thank you, Dr. Walter. Any questions or comments about the grant application? Ms. Smith, and then Ms. Vasine?
Yes, I have a question about the CEES positions. It looks like we're reducing from 27 to 14 in that category? Increasing the counselors and decreasing the paraprofessionals. Can you just give us some insight on the rationale behind that and the impact that it may have on our students?
Sure. So the number of staff is decreasing because we're moving the model away from a model where the students' interventions are delivered primarily by the paraprofessionals, to one where we're focusing on delivering those services through trained school counselors. They won't necessarily be called school counselors, but that'll be their background and credentialing. In terms of transitioning that program, there are going to be some changes in some discussions with schools about the existing students that are being served with CEES, which are primarily general education students, because that's what VDOE allowed in the past. However, again, the reason why they identify our particular school division is because of the disproportionate suspension of Black students with disabilities. So the intention of changing the program is to make sure that we target those students specifically. That number, based on where we've trended, is smaller than the number that we have typically served CEES students in the past, in the general ed population. So part of that, though, does mean that because we are primarily, but not exclusively, focusing on a different set of students, we will be able to continue to serve some general ed students, but it won't be to the extent that we have in the past. So that is going to require conversations and planning with schools as we make that transition, about how those students can continue to be supported through other interventions and supports in our overall VTSS and PBI structure.
Thank you.
Ms. Vasine, go ahead.
Gosh, I was just trying to unmute myself, forgetting that I'm not on Zoom. Dr. Walters, thank you for the presentation, and Ms. Smith, thank you for that question. I'm going to piggyback off of that. First, so the supports that were in place for the general education students, the funds can now be used for the target population, which is our students with disabilities.
Yes, ma'am.
And the purpose of that is because of the over-identification of Black students with disabilities, correct?
Yeah, over, yes, disproportionate suspensions, not identification.
Suspensions, right. But, so, before we get to that point, and this is a question I've, you know, been, I've asked and have been concerned about, you know, since my time on the school board, has been around our manifestation review. I've asked and have been concerned about, you know, since my time on the school board, has been around our manifestation review process. And the last time that was evaluated, and if greater supports need to be considered by the school board to enhance or support that process, because oftentimes, I know, I'm not the only one, but board members have, you know, have questioned, okay, you know, there's a disability category, we get the list of suspensions, we see that, you know, a student is, has an IEP, and it's undergone the manifestation review, but sometimes that, you know, at least for me, it oftentimes seems like the behaviors that landed the suspension align with the disability category. So, I wonder if there is an evaluation of the manifestation process, if there's a pattern analysis process that's part of it, and if there are barriers to doing that, what those are, and how might we support additional resources there? So, I know that's a big question.
That's okay, I think I got the gist of it. You know, first, yes, the manifestation determination review process is an IEP team process, just like, you know, all of the other meetings held. So it is subject to the team's decision about whether or not the behavior is directly related to the disability or failure to implement IEP services. The division has trained and continues to train on the MDR process, you know, for schools, both for students with disabilities under IDEA and also under Section 504, you know, so both of those students have right to MDR procedures. We also provide training regularly and ongoing around functional behavior assessments and behavior intervention plans. The department staff supports schools individually in terms of reviewing data for those procedures and providing input about preparing for those discussions and things to consider. You know, the other piece that you mentioned, though, really kind of, I think, speaks to monitoring of the MDR process. You know, and that is an area that we can take a look at in terms of what that will look like in Norfolk Public Schools, you know, moving forward. Certainly, even as the senior director for special education, I don't have right to tell IEP teams, obviously, what their decisions can be. But we can provide, you know, additional support to them, and also do some monitoring in terms of reviewing MDR procedures and the data that they use to make decisions to let them know whether or not a decision seems appropriate based on the data and the information that they use. So, MDR, as well as many other procedures, are things that we're going to be looking at in terms of spot checking, for lack of a better term, the discussions and the information that IEP teams use around students. But it is a valid point and something that we need to build on further as a part of department efforts.
Okay, thank you for that comment, and I support, you know, any effort to look at that. And you mentioned the training, so that's the other piece, and you mentioned the BIP and the FBA training around that, and one of the things our legislators, you know, in the General Assembly just passed, you know, around cultural competency, is that training also built in, is that described at greater length in this plan?
In the annual plan? No, ma'am, it's not necessarily a function of the annual plan.
Okay.
It's not necessarily a topic that's exclusive to the purview of special ed either, but it is certainly a conversation that when we take a look at the overall VTSS and PBI separates in the division, it's certainly a conversation that special education has to be involved in and tying into those procedures.
Okay, okay, and last question. So, as a result of the impacts from the pandemic, can you quick provide any areas that that are included here that I just haven't captured yet that are reflective of the impact of of this year of remote learning for our students with disabilities?
Annual plan, yes. Well, if I understand, you know, your broader question, certainly, there's been a lot of effort this school year, you know, as we deal with the pandemic and how to make sure that we keep students engaged and adequately meet their needs, especially for the students with disabilities. You know, during, you know, up until more recently has been a completely virtual environment, and now as we move into the hybrid environment. You know, that has, for special ed staff like everyone else, included shifts in use of instructional tools, you know, and so when we think about those things moving forward, using funds, most of 611 and the federal grant is used towards personnel. So, separate from that, though, you know, in our operating budgets and our other available funding sources like CARES, the department has used those funds and is planning to continue using those funds to provide for things, you know, like platforms to deliver instruction virtually or via hybrid model, expanding use of RETHINK SEL resources, but beyond SEL, also into sort of the data monitoring tools that RETHINKs use so that we can, you know, identify and target, even going back to the FBA and BIP process, if we're tracking data for students, do we have tools to do that? Because that's one of the biggest challenges with those procedures for teams, for FBA and BIP, is actually collecting the data. You know, other pieces of that involve things like taking a look at curriculum for special education students, you know, and so outside of the efforts that our wonderful friends in the CNI department do for our general ed curriculum across the division and tier-one instruction, we've partnered with them quite a bit this year to talk about co-planning, co-teaching. We're currently developing a co-planning and co-teaching resource document that we plan to use to train teachers throughout the division. We've talked about partnering together to take a look at research-based programs for reading and math, as well as social-emotional learning, that we can make sure are in place in the division beyond the general ed curriculum so that as opposed to special ed teachers just being familiar with the general ed curriculum and trying to figure out how to support that, we take the guesswork out of, when you know that a student is struggling in a certain area of reading, well, what's considered research-based, what's an effective way to address those specific areas of concern? Making sure that we put tools in place for them to use to target those specific areas. So, I'm not sure if that answered your question. All of that is a part of this process, but it may not all be covered under this particular funding source.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bassin, vice chair Jordan.
Thank you, Dr. Walter. I just want to make sure I'm following. Under the 2122 implementation changes, are we saying that we are making progress with suspensions with the students with disabilities, African-American students disproportionately suspended? Or we are not making progress?
Sure. We continue to be identified for disproportionate suspension of Black students with disabilities in the city of Norfolk, within Norfolk Public Schools, and so the short answer to that is no, we can't say that we've made progress to the point that we've been able to get out of that designation. In terms of CEES, the point that I was making during the presentation is that the disproportionate suspension of students with disabilities, particularly Black students, is the reason why we're placed on mandatory set aside. VDOE requires that we set those funds aside, but up until now, they've said these are the group of students that we're concerned about, and as a result of that, you need to set this money aside to provide interventions. However, you can't use those monies and develop that intervention plan to actually target those students. They've come to realize that that's probably not the best approach. You know, within the last several years, the number of school divisions placed on mandatory set aside has increased in the state of Virginia from, you know, maybe seven to about 22 even in the last three years, you know. And so now, what they've allowed is that as we develop our CEES interventions, we can develop our plans to target the actual population that they say is the area of concern. And so, given that opportunity, we'll not only be changing the model from use of paraprofessionals to primarily deliver those interventions to use of staff that are trained as school counselors, we'll also be taking a look at the students that receive CEES services.
In last year's plan, when we received information on, I guess it was 12 schools that were being served, I noticed you had that in this presentation. But within the data that they had for the 1819 and 1920 years, it identified the 12 schools,
Yes.
if I'm understanding correctly, who are being supported by the CEES program, and then it identified schools not supported by the CEES program who were demonstrating a reduction. Is there some way to see where we were from what we'd identified we would be doing based upon last year's data? And where we are with this year's data? Just for an apples-to-apples. So, for example, it showed that Blair had 58% reduction, Lake Taylor School had 100%. They had some raw numbers in there, because I know, for example, for Mari, it said it had no reduction, but they just had one student. So, is there some way of seeing what we showed, we had identified last year's results and planned outcomes with what it is this year and the planned outcomes with this plan?
Sure. Let me make sure I understand your request accurately. You're asking if we can provide information to indicate whether or not the students that were served under CEES this year demonstrated a reduction in suspension?
Yeah, what the change has been, if any. So, and I can email it, but in the presentation last year for the plan, it identified the percentage, I'll just read from it, says, "Using suspension data from 1819 and 1920 to date, for African-American students with disabilities suspended more than 10 days, note the following percentage in the reduction of students who were suspended." So then it lists the 12 schools that I guess are being supported by, at that time, by the CEES program, and what their success was or what their reduction percentage was. Then it also identified schools not supported by CEES that were also demonstrating a reduction, J-Cox, Crossroads, Lindenwood, Norview Elementary, St. Helena, St. Helena, Tanner's Creek. So I was just trying to see, based upon what we saw last year in terms of the success of reductions, is there some way to see where we are this year?
Sure, I think the challenge-
How this program will, is projected to impact
Certainly.
positive outcomes.
So, normally, the short answer would be yes. The challenge this year is that the kids have not physically been in school, so there've not really been any suspensions, you know what I mean? So, that's kind of going to be the issue with that, you know. There were questions even among, you know, special ed, senior directors about, well, how is the state going to identify CEES schools this year? They've not said, but what it looks like is that if you are already on CEES set aside, at least in the area of discipline, that you're going to remain that way for the upcoming school year. Now, you can also be placed on CEES set aside for over-identification of students with disabilities in certain disability categories. You know, those types of areas, you can still produce data based on our evaluation data to say, are we still over-identifying students as autism or over-identifying students in any particular group? But the challenge this year is going to be that we haven't had students being put out of school. They've continued to receive CEES supports this year, you know, and that has looked like, the way that has had to shift this year is with things like supporting family engagement and, you know, student engagement, checking in with students and families to make sure that if they need assistance with logging in, with getting access to work and materials from teachers, they've still provided, you know, sessions around social-emotional learning and instruction although via Zoom, as with everything else. So those kinds of things have happened, students have continued to be supported under CEES that were eligible for CEES supports, but discipline data is going to be a challenge.
So, I'll ask it this way. To the extent, let's just, and this is hypothetical, I'm making these numbers up.
Sure.
So, let's just say if we previously had identified 100 African-American students with disabilities suspended more than 10 days prior to the pandemic, are we able to determine today, of those 100 students, how many of them are still with us today?
Oh, okay, so, on one of the slides I mentioned in terms of fiscal year 22 implementation of the CEES plan, our intention is to use 1819 and 1920 data to determine who those kids were that were suspended 10 or more days in this school year, and how many of them are still enrolled in Norfolk Public Schools for the upcoming school year. And that is how we will be building caseloads for the 12 CEES-proposed counselors. So, do I have that information with me here tonight? No, I do not. What VDOE asks for us to do in the annual plan process is to propose, you know, what I guess I would refer to as the bird's-eye view of the CEES interventions, because we're primarily focused on the funding and how we plan to use the funding. However, beyond that, they do ask that once we go through this process, should the school board approve, and it gets sent to VDOE and they approve, then they will ask us to develop a CEES worksheet that outlines in detail what our plan is in terms of what exactly will the counselors be doing, what students are we working with, how are we going to measure progress, at what rate do we intend to impact the area of disproportionality and those kinds of things? So it is in conversation, and I can certainly provide that data to you once we're finished pulling it.
If the board is okay and Dr. Burusong is okay, I can just share what the presentation was last year, and then, I mean, I'm in support of the plan, but I think it just might be good for us, since we've been talking so much about data and student outcomes, to just get a sense of what that caseload was or that group of students happened to be last year and what we're projecting that it may be or actually may be for the upcoming-
Per staff members, what you mean?
Well, they didn't give us per staff, it just, it showed it by school, it was percentage by school, so I don't-
Sure.
I don't want to go down that deep, but just whatever's apples-to-apples.
Sure, absolutely, and you know, what I share here tonight, one of the reasons why I mentioned it being the caseloads and the school assignments for the councils will be determined based on the data, is, you know, I'm projecting that it'll still be secondary schools that we're providing those services in, but again, that's all going to drill down to the data. If the data tells us that we have a larger issue, you know, say in some of the earlier grade levels, then we'll have to take a look at, you know, how are we building caseloads and school assignments for those staff to support those areas? But we will be targeting those students that are disproportionately suspended and tracking that information.
Thank you.
So, I have a question. Has the Special Education Advisory Committee seen this application, and if so, did they have any feedback?
Sure, I presented it to them on April 1st. They were able to go through the review and ask questions. They didn't necessarily provide feedback. Once I was able to, you know, talk through their questions, as I'm doing this evening, you know, they kind of consented in their meeting, you know, to move forward. Some questions that they did ask are similar, you know, to yours in terms of how will we be identifying students? You know, what's going to take place with the existing staff? One of the things they did mention is why the plan is based on use of counselors as opposed to some other type of, you know, mental health or intervention professional. So, you know, part of that involves that, you know, I can propose anything that I like, but I also have to be able to reasonably implement it. And so, you know, working within the budget amount that we have, as well as knowing that school counselors' positions are fairly competitive, after talking with Human Resources, as well as Ms. Harmon, the senior coordinator for school counseling, I've understood that, you know, we typically have a lot of quality applicants, you know, with those credentials. And so, that's how we made that decision.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bassin, go ahead, and then Ms. Smith.
I wanted to ask, one of the things that I've advocated for, for our students with disabilities in particular, for, you know, year after year, are board-certified behavioral analysts, BCBA's, and I know there's been support to include those in our budget, but can you speak to that, and if that is one of the specialist positions that's listed here?
Sure. No, the teacher specialist position that's funded under the federal annual plan is not a BCBA. In terms of the CEES plan, again, kind of going back to what I was just saying, one of the things that we wanted to consider is, first of all, our paraprofessionals that work in CEES have been, you know, wonderful. You know, I get a lot of positive feedback about them as I met with principals to talk about this transition and the change in the model. You know, several of them mentioned that as we move those paraprofessionals back into special education, paraprofessional positions, they'd like to maintain their folks because they're strong, you know. However, they're not necessarily trained, you know, to provide academic and behavioral interventions. In terms of this particular plan, BCBA's were not a reasonable option. One, based on the overall amount of the grant and how much we can use for those services. But the larger issue is really that, again, I can propose it, but I have to actually be able to do it. Trained BCBA- Trained BCBA's are very, very rare, you know what I mean? And so, the likelihood of being able to secure any, let alone twelve, is, is unlikely. And so, at least for the purposes of this, this plan that I'm presenting tonight, that's why BCBA's are not a part of it. As to the division's efforts to provide a BCBA, I think I'll leave that, you know, that feedback maybe to, to others. I do know it's been a discussion and we've talked about trying to, to meet that commitment, but the challenge is typically is finding them.
Yes, go ahead, Dr. Burson.
And, and Ms. Vaseen, to, to your point, we are certainly very concerned about that and professionals that are certified in that area, as you know, they're so, they're so difficult to secure. So, one recent conversation that Dr. Paul and I had was around looking at our current behavior specialists and perhaps offering a cohort of our own and growing our own and providing that certification with the mandatory commitment as we have with our math specialists and reading specialists. We're in the very early stages of, of investigating that, but that has been a conversation because that area has been extremely hard to staff.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I was gonna, I was gonna ask you about that as a secondary option is, could we train, you know, our own, you know? So, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions to prepare you for your vote on the twenty-first? Smith, go ahead.
I have a comment. Piggybacking off of something that Mr. Jordan said, it seems like, if I heard correctly, th- these grant funds are definitely used in an area that addresses student outcomes. And as such, I think it would be helpful to the board somewhere towards the end of the school year or midway that we receive a report out on the results of the utilization of these funds, because it seems like you're, if I heard correctly, we're able to set our goals in the application in terms of how we plan to use the funds and what we expect to get out of it. So, I think it would be useful to us to be able to receive that final report, per se, that tells us how, to what extent do we meet our goals.
Certainly.
And, and then, as it seems like you're doing, it's used as the basis for the following year, but then we're, we're, as a board, able to follow and track how successful we are with this. And I don't know if successful is the word, because it's a, I understand it to be a work in process, progress, and we're constantly having to tweak it, but then we're able to see exactly what's transpiring.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you repeat that for me? I'm not sure I understand what you were asking.
So, we have the, I'm just using CEES as an example, the twelve personnel for that. So, part of that dealt with, it's for the students without disabilities-
In the past.
Without, right?
Yes.
And it's for intervention. So, how, and, and having these counselors, and we haven't identified the student population yet, right? We still have to do that. So, how successful are we at providing interventions in terms of this with suspension?
Yes.
How successful are we at this?
Okay.
So, I think, if you don't mind, again, going back to, you know, what Mr. Jordan was saying is, is first, as we move into twenty-one, twenty-two school year implementation, absolutely, we're going to be using data to identify who the target population is, because that target population is now changing, right? Primarily, but not exclusively, so it's, it's changing. So, we will be using data to identify who are those students. We have to use eighteen, nineteen, and nineteen twenty data for students that are still enrolled, because again, they haven't been in school to be suspended this year. So, that's similar to, in terms of implementation this year, you know, as I described, students have continued to receive CEES supports, but data around suspension and my being able to present that as a part of this year's annual plan at the end of the year has not been possible. However, moving forward into next year, if I heard you correctly, you would like to have data shared with the board, certainly at the end of the year, but maybe even midway or incrementally throughout the year about our progress.
Right.
And, and we're happy to accommodate.
But, but definitely at the end.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't think the quarterly or monthly is necessary. But definitely somewhere at the end.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Dr. Walters.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
And up next on our agenda, we have the CTE Perkins Plan Review Update by Ms. Goshen. Good evening.
Good evening to everyone. Thank you so much for this opportunity to present to you our CTE Annual Perkins Plan that only, not only encompasses what Perkins entails, but gives you an overview of who we are, what we are, and what we do for career and technical education each and every day for our darlings in Norfolk Public Schools, pre-K through twelve. When we look at how we get started as we advance to the next slide, exactly what is it that Perkins expects from us, but it's more than just meeting the compliance of a plan, it's meeting the needs of students and ensuring that there's connections to their next phase in life that they can be successful. When we talk about what we are about, we look at three things that is a part of Perkins Five. We look at academic instruction, ensuring that our programs are robust and relevant, but also it ties in the core content that makes it all real for our students, synthesizing what they've learned in core content, pre-K through twelve, and connecting it to real life so that they can see, yes, math matters, yes, that science that I learned is going to help me as I move on. You always hear, why am I learning this? Connecting those dots for them in a seamless way is really what CTE is all about. When you have your academic instruction, you also have your technical education. They are not two that are separate and siloed. Your technical education, that's your certifications, as well as the national standards of a career that a student must know in order to be successful. Our goal is for our students to enter in higher skilled, higher waged, more in-demand careers so that they can be successful from life and beyond. We always talk about college, career, and civic readiness. It's really about college, career, civic, and life readiness for each and every student. And we also tie into that work-based learning. You can teach someone something, they can sit and hear, but until they place their hands on it, until they're exposed or in a scenario where they can work through it, the ahas come to life. So, when you look at CTE programming, we're talking about academic instruction, technical education, those skills, those hands-on things that they learn tied with certifications, and work-based learning for an array of exposure to what they're doing. As we transition to the next slide, we get an opportunity to see how we build out that pipeline of talent for college, career, civic, and I'm adding in, it's not on the slide, life readiness, because that's really what it's about. When we look at it, some school divisions, you either focus on high school, or then you realize you're not doing what you're supposed to do, and you run, and you focus on middle school, and then you realize something's not working at elementary and you run. But we don't do that. We take a look at pre-K through twelve and those major transitions so we can solidify what we're provided. And that's not just CTE, that's all of Norfolk Public Schools, each and every day of what we're doing. For CTE, we like to think of the three I's: introduction, infusion, and immersion. When you're in elementary school and you're thinking of the introduction, you're walking in, on Monday, I want to be a doctor, on Tuesday, I want to be a lawyer, on Wednesday, I'm a fireman, Thursday, I'm a firefighter, and sometimes we say it's elementary, but we kind of know some adults who kind of switch every day. I have a college student at home, you start one month with one major, and then the next thing you know, he wants to do something else. But for elementary schools, that's not a bad thing. That introduction opens up their dreams and what they could do. We always talk about each life in each mind of a student has the potential for brilliance, their lives has a potential for success. That's when we have to get in there early and foster that, making sure we connect them. So, the introduction at the elementary level, me, being more than just college and career phase, someone comes in once a year, talk to them about a bunch of careers and leave. We have to do more. And so, what we do is we make sure the students have an introduction to careers throughout the year at the elementary level. We also look at, with the wonderful help of our amazing school counselors, we are required in the state of Virginia to do an academic career plan portfolio for our elementary school students. That is part of the standards of accreditation. That is where you get in and you begin a elementary plan of the interests that a student may have, the likes, the dislikes, what they think they may do, giving us an opportunity to start to shape and mold and expose them to things. For us, that we're adding brand new for the first time will be a Career Connections class at the elementary level. Our CTE programs has always been middle through high. We are bringing down to grade five a Career Connections class where students have enrichment, whether it's CTE after-school programs, introduction to STEM, introduction to drones, but then also during the day as part of a resource, whether it's infused in that resource or they have a separate class, where they're really learning about a variety of careers, those that are based on their academic career plan portfolio, their interests, but then exposing them to things that they may not have thought of, making sure that we don't limit any elementary school student, but we open up as much as we can as possible. Once we work with them and the class is only at the fifth grade level, we move on to middle school where you have more of an infusion. That's when we have structured classes that are offered at all of the middle schools, including our K eights. We're looking at development of their career skills, looking at planning, looking at a deeper exposure, because at sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, I have a better idea, sometimes I have a lot of energy, but a better idea of what I'd like to do or what I may like to explore. In the seventh, sixth, and seventh grade, you take more of the exploratory classes for STEM. You can take it for like facts, culinary arts. We no longer do home economics. We do facts, we do culinary arts, sometimes we do nutrition and wellness, exploratory for business, exploratory for information technology, computer science. That's sixth and seventh grade. When you arrive at the eighth grade, you get an opportunity to participate in CTE credit, high school credit-bearing courses. They take the same courses they would take in a ninth-grade class, it's taken at the seventh, eighth-grade level. It is taught the same way teachers are certified, so they may take coding at a, at a, at a middle school, they may take technological foundations. That credit goes with them and that allows them to start their sequence and concentration very early in middle school. In addition, at the middle school level, they participate in leadership training and competitions. This year, we received a CEED grant. We would like to have at each middle school various STEM competition teams where our students can compete locally, nationally, and internationally, and but it's more than just competing. Sometimes you have a team and they win, they, they only win because they're the only ones in the competition. Our students will win and we will go up against various different groups, but in order to make that happen, you have to expose students early. And so, we did put in for a grant, we did get it, we are piloting the STEM competition teams, Southside STEM Academy and Blair Middle School. Reason why we selected those two, you have a newer program and a more veteran program coming together to make it happen. What they have built out is they have a STEM team that will go on and compete in various different ways. The model that we build will spread out to the other middle schools. For next week, all of our middle schools will be participating in a Lego competition as part of their career student and technical organization, and that's on next Wednesday. So, I'm already claiming that we're winning because it's going to happen, and so I'll give you more about that. In addition to middle school, when you have career and technical student organizations, we make sure that the academic and career planning is also there, looking at the core academic courses they need to take to move on and be successful, adding in also what is required for them to be part of CTE, connecting to high school, and what is it that you may wish to look at at post-secondary? And you think about it, it's never too early to start speaking success into the lives of children, and so getting them to do that is done very early. That comes through our school counseling department, but in CTE, we assist with that by providing the career interest inventories for our middle school students and the career assessments for them so they can build out that plan. Once we do that infusion in middle school, we're on to high school, where we offer an array of classes that immerses a student into the educational field of which they choose, the career field of which they choose. We do this by offering various pathways that end with credentials. Our students take dual enrollment classes with Tidewater Community College. We participate in work-based learning that is assigned to all of our classes. We move on to do a variety of competitions. We do so many different things to assure that there is a connection to our post-secondary options and opportunities for all students. When you look at that and you say, well, why are you doing so many different things? We have to build a continuum that's going to mean something for children, and you cannot do it in a siloed and fragmented way. So, what is happening in our pipeline is not just unique to CTE. We are a part of the fabric of all the core content. We work very closely with curriculum and instruction. We work very closely with other electors, so it's seen as a holistic approach to education and not, okay, let me stop doing math and go to my CTE course or to my STEM course. It all has to be one and the same in order for our students to be successful. As we transition to the next slide, it gives you an idea of how many students that we're servicing. In our CTE programs, we have enrollment of over eleven thousand, and that normally stays pretty steady. You may have a two or four percent variance, because just like with everything else, enrollment in a division impacts how many students we have in a class. We offer it at all of the middle schools, K eights, high schools, auxiliary sites, and that includes Net Academy, Madison, as well as Open Campus and the Evening School Program. We make sure that our students have a choice. There are several students that are included in that eleven thousand who have two classes. I may take, for example, ROTC, and I may take welding, or I may take culinary and I'll take AP Computer Science or Cyber Security. So, they have an option to take more than one CTE course during the course of the year. At the middle school level, all of the courses are eighteen weeks, so they change each semester with the exception of their high school credit-bearing courses, which go for the full year. At the high school section, we are thirty-six weeks full year with the exception of the Technical Center. At the Technical Center, our students take two years of a course in one year. So, September to January, you're finishing one course, February to June, you're going into a second course. Reason being, they're there five and a half day, hours, excuse me, five and a half hours a day. They are able to accomplish more of the curriculum and master the content area a lot quicker. We offer seventy-plus courses. That's about six hundred to six hundred and fifty sections of courses throughout the master schedule across the division. We're in fifteen career clusters, which we will add a new one next year. The newest one will be energy cluster, renewable energy, and of course, I just said, at the fifth grade level, we're adding a course. As we transition on to the next slide, giving you a better idea of who we serve, CTE is everywhere. We offer it to every single student, there is no special area that a student is not in, whether you're gifted, high ability learner, special education, non-special students with disability. When you look at Perkins, in addition to offering everyone, they want us to ensure that we are addressing what is known as a federal categories of special populations, that is, students with disabilities, non-traditional students, that includes students who are in agenda that's considered to be unrepresented for a particular career. For example, you look at females in engineering or STEM. If it's twenty-five percent or less, then you're considered underrepresented. Economically disadvantaged students, homeless students, we work McKinney-Vento students, offering in collaboration with the Early Learning Office, special programs in the summer for our McKinney-Vento students, students who are single parents, not students of single parents, but tho- Not students of single parents, but those who are single parents themselves, providing special services for them. Students who are in foster care or those who have aged out of foster care, making sure that they have CTE programming available to them. English language learners. We really work hard to ensure that our ELL population has, have access to all that we do. We employ several different programs in collaboration with Mrs. Hobson in order to make sure that happens. There are several different programs that are just for them, whether they go to the Technical Center or remain at their home school. We also work closely with the military-connected students. Those are for individuals who are parents who are in active duty and then out-of-workforce individuals. Perkins runs for college as well. That's normally them because most of our students are 18 and under and they work part-time. But if we have any students in need of working or in need of employment, we have services that helps them to gain employment as well as to keep employment. This year, we were awarded the Jobs for Virginia Grant, which allows us to work with students who may have several different barriers to graduation or employment. We have a coach that works with them that they can remove the barriers as best as possible to graduation. But most importantly, help them find a job and do what's needed to keep it. Keeping, finding employment and maintaining employment successfully are two totally different things. We want to make sure our students are successful. As we transition forward to the next slide, we take a look at what is offered. And I am not going to read it all to you because you all have had a very long day. But these are the pathways and clusters and things that are offered. We have information technology. Those are the courses that are offered. Each of those courses have the entry level and the advanced level. If you see DE next to it, that is a dual enrollment class with Tidewater Community College. Our students can either take it onsite at the community college. We're working towards that. Or they can take it virtually or our teachers are credentialed to offer the class on the Norfolk Public Schools campus. When you see a class in red, that's a new class that's being brought on. New cybersecurity courses, new middle school courses that are coming on. And just ensuring that each of these pathways have been brought on board by a group of stakeholders, internal and external, helping us to find what is best for our students. If our review, where each of our pathways, we're working towards national accreditation, which gives us the highest standard in order to follow. If we find that that particular pathway is not the best pathway due to data for labor market, then we work to move that off or reinvigorate that particular cluster. Each of our pathways and each of our clusters happen to be aligned with a business, higher education, and any other organization that is considered to be the expert or the exemplar standard. So if you had to look at information technology, I'll take that one for example, but it could be health and medical sciences. In information technology, we have a group of businesses that helps us to build that out. They review our curriculum, they review technology, they help train teachers and bring forth experiences and education to our students. We connect with Norfolk State University, Old Dominion University, and Tidewater Community College. In health and medical sciences, we may be connected to Centerra where we are also accredited nationally in several different areas there. When you see the red, I'm happy to say we are bringing on health and medical science in the middle school area, aligning our pathways with the specialty programs that we currently have in place. As they go through a transition of restructuring, we're bringing on pathways that build those out and allow us to offer more to more children so we impact the critical masses. As we move to the next slide, it is a, an example of what you've just seen, just giving you a better idea of the other pathways and programs that are offered. There is STEM, which is a wealth of information and courses that are provided there. I'd like to highlight one area, aerospace and aviation. That is a new program completely being brought on by us. We are working with Ames Program where we are, they have applied on our behalf and some others for an FAA grant, where we can bring forward aerospace and aviation programming to our middle and high school students. It's being done in collaboration with Hampton Academies, Prince William County Public Schools, and two other school systems in Northern Virginia. So we will be part of a regional program. We are also working with Ames on summer programming where our students will participate in Drone Academy, iFly Academy, getting our students in aviation. Mechatronics will come on board as well as biomedical science. Each cluster, each pathway will have new programming for the 2021-22 school year. We also put down there, because a lot of people do not realize, NJROTC is CTE. So years one through four falls under CTE. And I know that's a shock because I've seen most of you look up from your page. Yes, it's part of government, training, and law. As we advance to the next slide and look at how we do all of this, last year brought on a ha for us, but it wasn't a ha in which we were not truly ready. Switching to virtual and hybrid learning really built upon what we had to do already. If you think back to previous plans, most of our plans talked about a strategic shift to virtual. And that's exactly what took place. The good thing about what we were able to do last year was to build upon our connections to the community to help us bring forward that. Giving you just some examples. There is no child in the world that I know that would have a commercial kitchen possibly or welding booth at home. We had to quickly find a way to make sure that our students were still able to access that. Working with the business community, we were able to shift where they were able to provide for us demonstration for our students, but also simulations. So instead of being in the booth at the Technical Center or in the kitchen at the culinary arts or in the nursing labs, our students were able to do it via simulation. We are going to take that up a notch next year and bring on virtual reality. So they will not sit in front of the computer. They will also be, I guess, superimposed into the scenarios where they will have the Oculus shields as well as various other things. And they will be the nurse, they will be the dentist, performing different things. Looking at how we're going to do this, building out innovation labs and various different fabrication and maker spaces available to our students, making sure that the technology that is needed is there. When you think of career and technical education, you think, well, we all have Chromebooks, would that work? Some of the programs require a higher operating system. You really don't do a lot of augmented reality and things of that nature on a basic book. So our plan and our business owners and our school division have assisted us in tremendous ways in ensuring that we have the high-level technology that is needed for our students. We can do that through virtual desktops. We can do that by higher operating systems. There's a variety of workarounds that we're able to do to ensure that our students are still connected. Everything that you see on the screen, we do in person and we've made it possible to do at home. So if a student is participating in CTE as a virtual scholar student, depending on what the program is, we have made it possible for them to continue to do so. Some of the students have elected to be virtual for the homeschool and come to NTC. You know, whatever makes them happy, we are going to do it and help them be successful. As you transition to the next slide and keeping in respect of the time, I'm looking at how the work-based learning experiences will be done for our students. These work-based learning experiences, we have moved them from just the school year into the summer as well. So we will have year-round work-based learning for our students. In service learning, we're doing it in collaboration with core content. Mentorship, the Greater Norfolk Corporation has a current program where they do a business mentorship program with Norfolk State University. We will now model hours after that and they will adopt us as virtual mentors and work with our students, assigning a business mentor based on the, the interest and the program of study for our students. They can do it in person or, or virtually. Job shadowing, that's pretty familiar to us. Internships and externships. We are implementing in September a program called Norfolk Works. Every time we do work-based learning or Norfolk Public Schools Works, actually modeled after Norfolk Works. Every time we do work-based learning, we spend a good part of the year going out in the community, asking individuals to come in and help us with work-based learning. Well, we've turned that inside. What we've done is partnered with the different departments in Norfolk Public Schools. So our students will do work-based learning there. One example is child nutrition or school nutrition. Our culinary arts students can now do their internships there as well as, once they graduate, apply for jobs that are open within that department. That department is not just serving food. There's IT, there's finance, there's budgeting. There's so much that we didn't even realize. So now our students, beginning next week, will interview for internships and paid employment with child nutrition. The same will happen with IT. Our programming students, instead of knocking on the door of an external business, we have a wealth of IT right here at our fingertips. And so our students will job shadow with network engineers. Our students will mentor, be mentored by them as well as hopefully, if they go on and continue to get the certifications, come back and be employed. Cooperative education, entrepreneurship, school-based enterprises. That's the only one we did not do this year, understandably so due to the pandemic. Our clinicals are still moving right along. We are still working with Centerra to get our nursing students and other medical students out there. Registered youth apprenticeship. We are still moving in the direction of ensuring our students are successful. And so when you look at work-based learning, it is more than just a one-time thing. We're making it ongoing. It is offered in the summer starting July 1. So our kids will be out working in the summer because of our partnerships with the Hampton Roads Workforce Development Council. As we move forward to our next one, I'm not going to talk too much about this one. It's career and technical student education organizations. Those are organizations that are required within Perkins as part of our CTE program. These are leadership clubs that our students, they're called co-curricular, not extracurricular. Leadership activities and competitions that are done in tandem with the work. We have FBLA for our business students. DECA is for marketing. Skills USA is for our skills and trades program. FCCLA, that's our family and consumer science. TSA is Technology Student Association. And HOSA is for our health and medical. I'm very happy to report, we shifted to a virtual competition base this year due to the pandemic. And we normally win first, second, and third place and move on to the national level and we have not slowed down at all. Our students just won first place at Gramby for FBLA. We had several different other students come in second and third. And then we have students competing this weekend. Normally, I'd be standing here telling you they're going to California and Florida and Kentucky and Ohio. They're staying home and we're virtually doing it. But it did not change. The commitment of our staff and the commitment of our students remain the same. And I'm so excited to see the awards they're going to bring home. So I will keep you posted on that. And Mrs. Matthews is going to teach us how to do a better job at marketing all that we are winning because we're doing a lot. As we move to the next slide.
Madam Chair, I do want to make a point that I want to go back to the slide. Let me come back to it. Please continue.
Do you want to wait, do it now?
No, continue. But I just want to make a point that I do want to come back.
Oh, okay.
Afterward.
All right, I'm going to make a note there, thank you. As we move to the next slide, and I know I'm going a mile a minute, but my eye's on the clock and I know I like to talk a lot. But I'm passionate about my kids and I'm passionate about what they're accomplishing. When you look at this and we say, okay, Keneta, you've told us about work-based learning. You've told us about technical education, academic education. How, how does that all fit into a life of a kid? And so this particular slide gives you an opportunity just for this one pathway. We have advanced pathways for everything that I have shared with you on this, in this presentation. Taking a look at this one, it gives you an example of the computer science pathway. So if I'm a student and I am interested in computer science, cybersecurity, or IT, and I start at the middle school level. Remember, elementary doesn't start until next year. I start at a middle school level, I come in and I can take in computer science, exploratory, cybersecurity or coding exploratory in my sixth and seventh grade. Figure out which one I like. Eighth grade, I move on to a high school credit-bearing class. Once I move on to high school, I have an opportunity to continue. I can take information technology. I can continue in cyber. I can go into computer information systems. Whatever I desire based on my interest in what I'd like to do in the future. Connected to that will be my work-based learning experience. As a ninth grader, I'm not out doing paid internships, but I will have a mentor or I could do a job shadow or I can do an industry tour to really get me connected to what I'm doing. I will also participate in competitions so I can hone my skills by the time I get to 10th, 11th, and 12th grade where I can compete nationally. Once I complete ninth grade and I go through my academic session because my middle school academic career planning session has to be renewed before the ninth and 11th grade again, I meet with my counselor and they are key to so much and we're working closely with our great counselors. I move on to my 10th grade. There, I can take a dual enrollment cybersecurity course. I can also participate in a team that will travel and compete. I will do work-based learning, but in ninth grade, I did job shadowing. I'm ready for something more. Now I can move on to an externship that's not as long as an internship or I'm not sure yet, so I need a mentor in cyber who's really going to show me the ropes and make sure that this is what I'd like to do. As I move from there to the 11th grade, now I know this is it. I'm in dual enrollment programming. So now I'm earning additional credit for college that my parents are very excited about. Or I don't want to take dual enrollment. Maybe I'd like to take AP Computer Science because either way, I'm still in my pathway to greatness for post-secondary. You can take dual enrollment programming and you get the college credit. Or some students decide to take dual enrollment and they move on into another area. We have a wealth of dual enrollment that's available that students have a choice. As they move on to 12th grade, they're continuing in dual enrollment. They're continuing to take classes that are moving them closer to what their post-secondary goal happens to be. But in the 12th grade, I don't need as many courses because I've met a lot of the requirements. I've already completed my concentration. And so I am out doing an internship where I am now paid. And hopefully, that's going to help me with college and getting a job. And so there's a method to how we move students through and this is available at all the schools. We don't pick and choose which school gets what, but we do work to align it with the student interests at that school and the specialty programs. When you look at post-secondary students, when they finish a pathway successfully, they're able to move on to higher education. That's two-year, four-year schooling, traditional trade school, technical school. 60% of our completers of CTE go on to higher education. About maybe 30% or less will go on to the workforce. Some go into the military, some go on to their own business. So that is just one example of how our students will move through it. I can do it for healthcare, which I will not, it's five minutes to six. But you could do that for every single program and it's at the different schools. And what we do is when a student completes an experience, we're required to survey them the next year to see how that particular pathway impacted them post-secondary. So that gives us a great idea of if we're meeting a mark or boy, are we so far out of the ballpark, we have to start over and try this again. And trust me, the graduates are very honest. If it did not work, they will let you know. We get an overwhelming response of satisfied students because we really try to connect them with what they need. As we transition to the next slide, and I promise I'll move along, we just don't do this for the sake of doing it. We have standards that we have to meet. This just gives you an idea. Every school division in the state of Virginia has to meet performance standards that are given to us by the federal government and the State Department of Education will negotiate. I'm proud to say thus far, I'm going to knock on wood because things, all sorts of things have been happening this year with the pandemic. However, we perform very well. We meet our standards. There is not a state report card for us this year because of COVID. They just did baseline data, but we will go back on a state report card. Moving to the next slide, we're looking at completers with credentials. This just gives you. This just gives you a percentage of our students who graduate, finish a CTE concentration, and earn a credential. And this gives you an idea of the percentage of students. We normally have 1,000-plus students each year complete. We look at, these are the different credentials that they earn. Although every student takes econ and personal finance, that is not the only credential they take. We have several different credentials and licensures that students take that are attached to the career of choice. So they may earn a wise credential, but then they can go on and get a licensure for nursing. As you shift forward to the next slide, looking at how all of this works, there is no school division that could honestly say and mean it that their CTE department operates on its own and we do all of this. It does not happen. For us, it's our internal and our external stakeholders that are our power partners. We have an advisory committee who rocks. I love them. They are there for us no matter what we need, whatever we ask, they are there. When we have an advisory committee, we break off into subcommittees, because we have too many different programs that we have to address. One advisory cannot do it. And so what we do is, we split into health and medical science subcommittee, we break into IT academy subcommittee, trades and industrial, hospitality, human services, and the STEM subcommittee. Those subcommittees are open to parents, teachers, students, and we all come together, they roll up their sleeves, and they work very hard. As part of the subcommittee, sometime they will break into work groups. Work groups right now, health and medical sciences is working on the application for, thankfully, for the Governor's Health Sciences Academy, putting together a team for what is needed for that. Our business and IT is working on entrepreneurship and cyber. How do we keep moving our students forward? Trades and industrial is working on the aerospace and aviation previously discussed. Hospitality is looking at expanding work-based learning for all, connecting our kids. For one example of that, our culinary students will be interviewed and hired, hopefully, tomorrow with virtually interviews. The Hampton Roads Workforce Council is doing what's known as hire our grads, where our graduates will be virtually interviewed by several different companies. The last subcommittee has a work committee for program expansion and credentials. As you shift forward and get to the last couple of slides, taking a look at our budget, Perkins is one pool of funding that helps us. Right now, we do not have the allocation for the 2021, '22 school year. That's all school divisions. You used your previous year, and once you get it, you readjust. When you look at how we spend the most of our money, it is for capital outlay, it is for technology. Technology takes up a good portion of the budget, and understandably so. It is expensive to run a CTE program. Personnel services, we normally do not put any salaries teachers on there, with the exception of one. Last year, you approved that we add a work-based learning staff person, because we needed someone division-wide to manage all of that. So we have one position solely in there. We have other part-time positions to help in our different special populations for remediation, things like that. When you look at contracted services, we're looking at professional development, consultant services, each time we are nationally accredited, we have to pay for that. Each time we're reviewed, we have to pay for that. So that covers it. Our CTSO competitions for our students' registration, internal services, and indirect costs and things of that nature. We also pay out of Perkins the vouchers that students take the credentials. We have to pay for that. Some of the tests are $10, some of the tests are $250. It just depends. And last but not least, the bulk of our funds go towards equipment, and that's really self-explanatory. That's it. The buyer freezer costs a lot. It's just really making sure we utilize the funds that are given to keep us reinvented, reinvigorated, and modernized so that our students can transition and work on equipment that will be in the world of work. As we transition forward, I am very thankful, as I am each and every day, for the work that you're doing and all that you give for CTE and Norfolk Public Schools as a whole. Thank you for the unwavering support of career and technical education, and I am prepared for any questions or any suggestions that you have as this time, as we are working to reimagine CTE for Norfolk Public Schools. Thank you.
Ms. Tanner, can, or whoever's doing the slides, I'm sorry. Can you go back to the technical organization slide, please?
That's just one starting point.
Go ahead, Mr. Clinton.
Thank you, Dr. Martin, and thank you, Mrs. Osha. So these organizations are there. I know that a lot of them are doing virtual contests. I've coordinated a couple of them. My challenge with this one is Norfolk used to be very represented in a lot of these competitions and these organizations.
Absolutely.
Matter of fact, when I was going through school, every middle school, high school was required to have one. And we went out there and participated, and I think y'all heard me say this before, I'm the only one from Norfolk who's ever been the state president of the Virginia Technology Student Association. That's cool, but it's been almost 20-some-odd years, and I'd love to see somebody else from Norfolk to do that. My challenge is, is trying to identify, when I looked at the budget, what are some of the, what are some of the barriers that are in the place right now, where our students aren't participating, whether or not it's stipends for the teachers to be advisors? I know it takes additional time. I just feel like so many of our kids are missing out. I'm not even going to get down and put you on the spot and say, well, how many of those kids? I know you said this first place and this and that, but I know that clearly, all of our schools are not participating, whatever that reason may be. But I would like to be able to hear at some particular point, if there's additional resources or what we need to have in place. But I shouldn't hear about a kid not being able to participate because they can't pay for dues, or, you know, things like that. So those are some of the things I like to, you know, to the board, so we can have more kids. Because they're learning not only their co-curricular things that they're learning in the curriculum, but they're learning leadership. They're learning so many other life skills that will take them far along. So that was one piece. I don't know if you, for that particular one, but, you know, if you could, you know, what some of those challenges may be. I mean, is it stipends for the teachers? Because I know it takes additional time.
For, then, thank you so much for that question, because not many people understand career and technical student organizations as part of a whole. Our teachers do receive a stipend for participation. The school division, that comes out very early, just as a coach's stipend, and I'm not saying it's the equivalent, but just as coaches are paid, advisors are paid, our CTSO organization sponsors, they are paid a stipend. We also make sure that if they incur any costs with travel or taking students anywhere, they are reimbursed, so they do not have to pay for anything out of pocket. We pay for their registration, travel, and we also do not allow any student to miss out on a CTSO activity because they cannot pay. That is part of the special population. If we have a student that falls into any of those categories or any other category, we pay for them. We can use Perkins funds to pay for students to participate, or we can use local funds. We have had situations where a student has won, and each year, and I can get the information for you, we do very well with our students advancing on and representing us at the national level, middle and high school. We have been recognized as having the largest chapters of FBLA, as well as TSA on the middle school level. Our HOSA, we win every year. There is not a year that we do not win first place for our health and medical science students. We normally travel to California and represent the state each year. What we do is, we have moved a lot of our CTSOs into true co-curriculum, because our students are active, and our division offers an amazing array of after-school, trying to decide, do I go to athletics? Do I go to CTSO? Do I go to remediation? So moving that into the day where the CTSO, if things are done in the classroom, is the best avenue to take. And then you can get the students after school, but getting them connected, getting them connected early, also making it where it's not another thing on the plate of a teacher. And so when we did the enhanced pacing guides for this year, we put it into the pacing guide. So as you are teaching something for leadership or customer service, those CTSO activities go right in. At the middle school level, same thing. Part of the bell is your CTSA program, and so we'll see a shift in students. The other thing is battle marketing, letting them know what it is, and collaborating with other clubs. And so I don't have to choose between this club and this club. Let's come together and have one activity, and it represents various different clubs. So we have to go at it differently and make it fit into the busy schedule of the students. Now, we have a lot of virtual things that we can do. So making sure that happens. But ensuring that our teachers are paid and trained, we have covered that. The division has worked hard. Finding different ways to fit into the time of our students, and just making it, quite honest, exciting.
Yeah, so I like to hear that. However, I think that the theory is not really coming into practice, and that's something I'll address with Superintendent and you, because I'm not really seeing it. I work.
Absolutely.
From a different level, and I'm not seeing those students participating in certain things, so I'll come back to that one.
Absolutely.
I did have some additional questions, and I just want to kind of quickly get to those. I saw a lot of great output, but my thing was, how many certifications are our students actually receiving? I think that that's what's important for individuals who are participating in the programs. It's great information. We hear a lot of great stuff, but at the end of the day, and I think I heard you did say that 60% of our students who are participating in CTE programs are going on to higher ed, and I also heard you say 30% or less are going directly in the workforce or military. But how many certifications are we at least getting out annually from our kids that are making sure that they're prepared? And I was trying to find that in here, and I didn't see that.
So starting with this year, we only tested half-year. And so we had 799 certifications held, and we didn't even get to do spring testing. The year before, we look at various different things. For one year, we exceed 3,000 a year. We always exceed 3,000 a year. The lowest that we hit was 2,100 certification. What we are doing is, now that it's aligned with each and every class, certifications used to be aligned at the end of the pathway, and that's what it has been done in vocational education. When we took a shift to career and technical education, we started aligning certifications with each of the courses. So now you see an increase. Before, you had very few. Now, you're over 3,000 or more. You could have easily a student walk out of Norfolk Public Schools with three or more valued certification, and that's the thing. Sometimes we get into numbers, but numbers don't equate to quality. So I can tell you, we'll have 10,000 by next year, and they not be worth the weight that the paper is printed on, but I can tell you that we are having quality certifications aligned with our programs, so when our students leave, they are globally marketable. And that is making the difference for our children. And so as you see, we now have more students getting nursing licenses, pharmacy tech licenses, and not just assessments or some feel-good certification that came out yesterday. It is about the quality of the license and the programming that goes in. And the same thing for our teachers. As we advance and we want more robust programming, you have to have the teachers trained to do that. So taking the time to get that done, absolutely. And going back to what you spoke about, about the career and technical student organization, I would love to sit down and talk with you, because we have one at every school, but as you know, not everything is implemented the same way, and we're working on that. And I'll take one school, for example, Southside STEM, and I'll say them, because I love them dearly, because they won, they were recognized for the Technology Educational Association Award. They started out with a technology student organization that was very small. And as we continue to work and grow, it has grown and grown and grown to a point where now they can compete. That's what that STEM grant is for. We have to make sure, when we talk about excellence and equity or equity and excellence, everything that I put up there, I don't like to put something out and we're not doing it. We are not there at every school, but we are working to get there. And that's why we pair the more veteran CTE school, that may have a veteran teacher, that has a stronger CTSO, with a school that's just starting out. So then we can balance it, and then for each of our grade levels, excuse me, for each of our grade bands, we have a specialist that will be assigned for elementary, a specialist that's assigned for middle, and we have multiple specialists who work with high school, so they can get in there and work on the CTSOs and everything else that needs to be done. We are on a tremendous journey. Are we there yet? Absolutely not. I would never sit here and stand here and tell you, but we have grown leaps and bounds, and we continue to do so, and it's because of each of you, our external stakeholders, our parents and our students, that are helping us to make it happen.
Definitely. And the last thing I just had was on the pathways. Right now, how we're implementing CTE, particularly at the high schools, just brief in the respect. So every high school pretty much right now kind of duplicates certain programs, and then there are certain specialty programs that are there? Is that my understanding?
Yes, there are some core programs that are at each and every high school, and then we've started to make a shift based on some of their specialty programs to align more. So I'll take, for an example, Maury off the top of my head. They have the medical program for EVMS. Instead of duplicating what they're doing, we're expanding out. So you may go to Maury, and there's an EMR program that you would find there, but you would not find it at Booker T. or Granby, but you would go and find a certification, excuse me, a cybersecurity program at another school that you wouldn't find there. There are some programs that I believe that are in demand that every school should have. You have, you don't wish to sacrifice one for the other. The great thing about that now, what we learned virtually, pathways of power can be in every school. And so we piloted distance learning this year. So at Norview, they had an amazing cyber teacher, and we didn't have one at two other schools. Well, now that teacher is able to do the class, and Granby and Booker T. were able to pick that up. And so now there are no barriers, because we learn to make the impossible now possible for our children. And so as we learn and grow, and sometimes, Mr. Clinton, you know me, I'm very honest. If we try something, it doesn't work, I don't stop until we get it right. And so piloting those different things, making it happen for our kids, that's what we have to do. We had to take a strategic shift, and it had to be intentional, to move our division from a vocational program to a career and technical education program that meant something for children each and every day. We couldn't give lip service to it. We had to roll up our sleeves and really make it happen. And so we're on that journey. I would love to tell you, today, we've checked every box, and we've done all, but that's not, that wouldn't be the truth, and I owe you better than that. We are growing so much that we have made our place in the community, that now we have the state calling us and saying, hey, I heard about what you're doing for work-based learning, Kenyatta. Can you all come and present to the state on how you do internships? Or they picked up the phone and said, I need to visit for a minute. And when they visited us, the first thing they asked, I heard about what you're doing with Old Dominion University and that grant. You develop models that to use for cybersecurity. Can we pilot it for a year and look at making it a model for the rest of the state to use? Five years ago, six years ago, you and I all know, we were not getting those calls. Now they're calling us, and it's before, it's because of the work that's being done by our teachers, our administrators, our parents. We have an awesome group. I'm so proud of the city, they're stepping up, doing so many things for us. So we're on our way. We truly are on our way. We can be proud. Can we sit down and cross our legs and hang our hats on the laurels of yesterday? Absolutely not. The moment you succeed at something, it's antiquated. We got to keep moving.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. I just, you know, I appreciate that. My biggest thing when it comes to particularly about, and I'm very passionate about, is ensuring, and this is why I brought out the idea of career academies and some other different models, that we're taking all of these different things and putting them in front of kids, is because particularly when the child gets to high school, ensuring that they have an end game in mind, whether or not it's going to, if it's going to college, or they're going to be a teacher, or they're going into the workforce, making sure that when they hit that door, they know that this is what I'm working towards, and they, we truly mean, you know, be career and college ready.
Oh, yeah.
So I hear a lot of great things, and like you said, the marketing piece of it, how we can do a better job to ensure that our parents and our teachers, I mean, not teachers, but our students understand the opportunities that they have.
Absolutely.
I think that that will help us on so many different fronts, ensuring that kids stay in school, that they graduate on time, and that they are truly ready. And so that's why I'm really passionate about that, and speaking of, so I thank you for...
And thank you for your support, because we've been at this for a while together. We took the first trips down to, I think it was Charlotte, 10 years ago. So you know, when I say we're doing something, I mean business. But until your marketing... But until your marketing, and Mrs. Matthew, I hate to put you on the spot, but she is with me, is it April 22nd at 10 o'clock or April 23rd at 10 o'clock? To talk about the marketing, I'm one, I'm about kids and I'm about the work. I'm going to do the work, but then I also know I need to make sure that we are expressing to our community what the work is that we're doing. But if you do it right, the product speaks for itself. And so they will never have to ask us, what are you doing? When our students walk across the stage and they have those jobs, they're able to tell us what we're doing. So you're 100% correct. It is 6:15 and you know I can talk forever about this, but I know you want to get out of here. Dr. Martin, are there any other questions for me?
Because of me, Dr. Martin.
Yeah, Ms. Smith has a question.
It's a comment. I have a comment. And Ms. Goshen, I'd just like to commend you and all of those who work with CTE on what you've done with the program. Since I've been on the board, it has continuously evolved into something that's each time meeting more and more of the needs of our students and I think that's great. It was also good to hear about the internships and the work-based learning, what did you call it, work-based learning experience. I've said this before and I just want to throw it out there again. And that's considering even more so the student population that we have as a pipeline for entry-level positions within the district as well as hard-to-fill positions within the district. I think as a whole, not just Norfolk Public Schools, but in the education, public education arena, we miss out on that concept that in developing them, the development is not necessarily to send you out somewhere, but it can also entail being right here and obtaining quality employment where you currently live. One of the examples I see in here is early education. It's called, I don't know how large that group is, but in my mind, that is a group that could potentially be a good candidate to create a pipeline for entry-level positions within our district or the region, but preferably our district. And there are some other hard-to-fill positions that we have. I don't see a program here for it, but it's worth exploring, I would think.
Absolutely. That is what I mentioned, the MPS works. That is taking our students and looking at the unfilled positions in Norfolk Public Schools that would meet their qualifications and working with them. The first entry-level positions we're looking at was the automotive entry-level positions. But on next, the next Wednesday, which is April 21st, Mrs. Winters and Mrs. Steed from Child Nutrition will be meeting with our culinary students to interview them for positions that are currently unfilled in child nutrition. And so we're looking how to move things like that. In the, with Mr. Danny Johnson, we're looking at how can our trades and building trade students who are of age meet the qualifications or work with them to meet the qualifications for entry-level positions there. So that's what our MPS works program has to be about. We have to groom our students to go out to the world of work, but there's so many positions here. And then also what you explained, the teacher cadet program. We did send our early childhood education teacher to training in order for us to convert to a program where our elementary, early elementary school students, childhood students can go and work and do the internships so that once they come out of college, they can come back and work for Norfolk Public Schools. I'm not going to say any other school division, so they can come back and work for Norfolk Public Schools. And there are several different opportunities for us to do that. And before we left for COVID, Mr. Sheets did participate in, I think it was a job fair or some sort of related program that spoke to that and he did reach out to me about it. And then COVID occurred and we could not make it happen, but as part of our Norfolk Works, we will make it happen.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Bissine, can you wrap us up?
Yes. Thank you so much for that presentation. Your passion is palpable and as you kept talking, you actually answered several of the questions that I had around, you know, pandemic, the impact of the pandemic as well as some of the post-secondary outcomes, which is something that, you know, I hope that in the future we can talk a little more about.
Yes.
About, you know, especially we have this opportunity to look at it longitudinally and what outcomes that we're hoping to achieve, you know, achieve and some monitoring around that. I did want to hear a little more about this pilot at the elementary grade level, the career connections that you're piloting and what it is that we're piloting for. I mean, so what are we hoping to assess as part of that pilot? And from a resource perspective, then what you would need to do that?
That would be particularly at grade five. The Career Connections class is a class that the state put in place that teaches us to introduce our students to the concept of various different careers very early. So it's not like a class that they sit down that would be like a math class. It's really more of a resource that exposes them to a lot of enrichment. So say for instance, if we're doing STEM careers, they will be able to do virtual tours. We have guest speakers from the different organizations to come in to expose them. Their after-school enrichment activities, I mentioned the FAA. So then they would be introduced to drones through the iFly program. It would be all of the 16 career clusters, giving them an introduction to what each of them may be. That is going to be piloted. That is Southside STEM Academy and Lake Taylor School. And we started with those two because they have middle school CTE teachers that can go down and help to support it. Once we work through it the first semester, then we will move out to two more additional elementary schools in order to get it moving. We also have our advisory who has signed on to help us build out and provide any resources that we would need.
Great. Thank you.
And in terms, I know you did ask me about data. I would love to come back and share the data, but sometimes I think I talk too much. Once a year, you're not going to invite me back the next time, so.
Wow. I love to see the data, so. Sometimes it speaks for itself.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Goshen. I appreciate the presentation. And we'll be voting to accept or not, you know, obviously. We'll be making a decision on the 21st, so.
Thank you. Have a great evening and be safe, everyone.
Okay, up next, we have our in-person learning update.
Good evening. All right. Can you guys hear me? Am I close enough?
Yes, go ahead.
Perfect. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Dr. Martin, Vice Chairman Mr. Jordan, members of the board and Dr. Birdsong. This afternoon, I'm here to present an in-person learning update. During the presentation, I will review grade data from the first two quarters, preparedness of elementary schools to accept students, concurrent instructional practices taking place, attendance and enrollment data, an update on the dashboards and transportation, as well as voices from the field from Dr. Balthazar, proud principal of Ingleside Elementary School, and Ms. Collins, fifth grade teacher at Ingleside Elementary School. Starting with a review of trend data on grades from quarters one and two, the data on this slide represent the percentage of students failing two or more courses at the end of quarter one over the past three years. As can be seen from the blue bars, which represent the 2018-2019 school year, and the orange bars, which represent the 2019-2020 school year, there were not great differences in the data. However, for the first quarter in 2020-2021, there were large increases in the percentages of students failing two or more courses, with the largest difference being in the socio-economically disadvantaged gap group showing a 44.2% increase in students failing two or more courses. As seen on this slide, the differences were not as large when comparing second quarter grades over the three years. The largest gap for quarter two was with Hispanic students at 15.6%. Of important note is that every gap group showed declines in the number of students failing two or more courses by the second quarter as compared to the first quarter. The data seen on this slide shows the differences in percentages of students failing two or more courses from quarter one to quarter two for each of the three years. As can be seen, for the 2018-19 school year, every group had an increase in failures except for the English learner population. And for the 2019-20 school year, every group had an increase except for the Asian group. However, as students and teachers became more familiar with virtual learning and instruction, this school year, every group saw large decreases in the percentage of students failing two or more classes between quarter one and quarter two. As doors opened for students across the division on March 15th, schools were ready to welcome students back and students were ready to come back. Teachers had set their rooms up for concurrent instruction. Custodial crews had buildings clean and shining and principals, along with their leadership teams, had the logistics of receiving students in line while following layered mitigation strategies. On the left side of this slide is Principal Cable and Media Specialist Ms. Smith with the library bookmobile at Norview Elementary School, making sure students have plenty of reading material. On the top right, kindergarten teacher Ms. Hayes at Ingleside Elementary has students finishing their breakfast in the classroom. And on the bottom right, Ms. Willie Clark at Southside STEM Academy is welcoming students as they walk into the building for the first time in a year. All schools have spacing markers on floors or on the walls as well as on seats in the cafeteria to ensure students maintain a safe distance. And across the division, the opening was a major success thanks to the hard work of teachers, building administrators, stool staff and division-level support. As students returned, teachers were not only prepared to teach concurrently, but they were also ready to meet their students' social and emotional needs. Enhanced pacing guides had been adjusted to allow time during the first week of in-person learning to support student needs and acclimate them to the buildings and to the new safety procedures. Each elementary principal was provided with reopening guidelines that outline guidance around many procedures, including arrival, dismissal, lunch, materials, restroom breaks and sanitation, to name a few. These were developed in conjunction with school leadership development and elementary school principals. Technology needs were being met as well as with Chromebook cases being delivered as seen on the left of the slide in the top right. Earbuds had been ordered and are now being delivered to each school as well as USB ports and additional wireless headsets for teachers as needs have arisen once students return to in-person learning. This slide shows a few styles of concurrent teaching taking place across the division. On the left is Ms. Woolley, a pre-K teacher at Willoughby Early Childhood Center. She is teaching from her computer with students viewing the material on the large screen while her teacher assistant works with students online via Zoom. In the middle is Ms. Crook, orchestra teacher at Academy for Discovery at Lakewood, who is standing in front of the class using her laptop so students on Zoom can see her and hear her teach while students in the room have the option to follow on Zoom or to watch Ms. Crook directly. On the right of this slide is Mr. Andrade from ADO who is teaching third grade math. He is using the webcam for students at home while standing in front of in-person students to teach the lesson. Across the division, teachers are quickly figuring out which method works best for them and their students as we transition back to in-person learning. Realizing the challenges teachers face with concurrent teaching, there is ongoing support through PD offerings and with their ITRTs. Focusing on enrollment levels for in-person learning, at the elementary level, the smallest in-person class size is one student and the largest is 13 students. With the average class sizes by grade level are between five to seven students for House A and House B groups. The data shows the amount of work done at each school to level out both houses prior to students returning to in-person learning. Here we see a breakdown of enrollment by grade level for the current enrollment for in-person in orange and VSA in blue. This slide has the VSA enrollment changes from the fall to the current data. In the fall, 22% of the students chose VSA, which dropped to 21% in the winter, a very slight drop. However, once the announcement was made of the plan to return to in-person learning, enrollment rose to 38% of the students and parents choosing VSA. The elementary number saw a large increase due to the fall and winter numbers, not including pre-K students as they were originally not able to enroll virtually once an in-person option was available. However, the VDOE has since given guidance that pre-K students are able to enroll and now we have 393 pre-K students enrolled in VSA. The average absentee rate for the first three nine weeks of in-person learning has been just over 7% for the students who have reported to schools. The highest rate was March 19th, which was nearly 8.5%. The lowest was March 24th, which was just below 6%. And this is comparable to traditional rates and a little higher than our VSA rates. This slide shows the lowest in blue, highest in orange and the average absentee rate in gray, broken down by grade level. As a reminder, only EL students and self-contained students with disabilities are attending in-person learning for grades six through 12 with this data. Here's the new health metrics dashboard that follows the most recent CDC guidelines of using a seven-day average for new cases per 100,000 and percent positive on Nats. Currently Norfolk is in the high transmission or red for new cases per 100,000 and in the substantial transmission percent positive in Nats. A more detailed information section was also added, including the latest CDC indicators and levels. A section on COVID cases for across the division by date has also been added and the line graphs have been updated to follow the seven-day average for Norfolk as well. The building ventilation dashboard was recently added to the NPS website to indicate the number of rooms with either fresh air from mechanical ventilation or from windows being able to open. The main screen lists each school with the total number of rooms that have any students occupying the rooms, the number without fresh air from mechanical ventilation and the percentage of rooms with fresh air from mechanical ventilation, as well as the percent of rooms meeting CDC guidelines. Once you click on a school name, the information breaks down by school level. Here the school is listed, then the room number, whether the system has fresh air from mechanical ventilation or whether the room has operational windows, if the room had a sanitizing humidity added to the room as an additional precaution and if the room meets CDC guidelines. As for the transportation, the ridership counts can be seen on this slide. The lowest number is one on a bus with the highest number being 31. The average ridership for the non-special education fleet is just over seven students per bus and the average ridership for our special education fleet is just over three students per bus. I'll now turn the presentation over to Dr. Balthazar and Ms. Collins to share the building-level perspective on returning to in-person learning.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Dr. Martin, Vice Chairman Mr. Jordan, members of the board and Dr. Birdsong. I am Alana Balthazar, proud product of Norfolk Public Schools and principal of Ingleside Elementary. Throughout this pandemic, as a leader, I have learned a valuable lesson. The key to happy students and families, happy staff, happy community, takes even more intentional planning during this time. So what did we do and how is it going? I am so excited every morning when I go to school and I see so many smiling faces of my scholars that come in wanting to be there. It just makes my heart leap. I'm also happy when I see a relieved staff and it is just such a great vibe in the building. On any given day, you will see me jump on the PA system with the song by Bob Marley from Don't Worry, Be Happy, Every Little Thing's Gonna Be Alright, from Pharrell to anything else that just keeps the momentum up for our staff and our scholars. We owe that to them. So the main focus, the main piece that has been very important for us is to focus on the social-emotional for all. Basically, what we did when the pandemic hit from last year is we looped our students from grade level. We took the entire grade level and looped them together as a class to the upcoming grade level together. It really helped when they continued the virtual learning and they really saw friends and familiar faces. Next, it also helped with ongoing communication. During that time, we had our teachers of the students from the previous year communicating with the parents and they transitioned to the new teacher with the communication. And it also was a win-win for the teachers because they were able to see data with the students coming in to immediately know where to pick up. So I believe that truly was a win-win for all. But when I tell you the community support and the partnerships, the village came out. We also have an exceptional We also have an exceptional family engagement specialist, Jackie Blackwell, who worked throughout and supported students and teachers with incentives and supports to assist with motivation, attendance, and participation. Next, we had virtual best practices in professional development, conducted by our very own Ingleside staff. We did this in a mini-conference retreat to keep the vibe going, to make it engaging, with team-building activities and valuing input from our ITRT department, network engineers, departments from CNI, and just the support coming together to increase and enhance student and staff achievement during this pandemic. The momentum has been great. So, you ask, what's next? So what's going on? What's the outcome so far? We have, and I will tell you, a relentless staff, and I know when I say that, I speak for all the schools, my colleagues as well on elementary. Very relentless and dedicated colleagues and teachers. Understanding parents, and I say "understanding" because when we have to explain the why for policies and procedures, they are getting on board with that and becoming more understanding. Mature students that are truly following the mitigation protocols. And we will continue to collaborate for improvement and enhancement for all of our stakeholders. So, as a leader, I can want this vision and implement it to full execution, but I can't without amazing teachers and staff at Ingleside Elementary, like Ms. Collins back here. So without further ado, I will turn it over to her. Thank you, and thank you for your time.
Good evening, Chairwoman Dr. Martin, Vice Chairman Mr. Jordan, and members of the board, and Dr. Birdsong. My name is Simone Collins, and I am also a product of Norfolk Public Schools. I grew up in the area, and when I decided to pursue a career in education, my first thought was to give back to the community who gave so much to me. I am honored to speak here today as a fifth-grade teacher at Ingleside Elementary School. I have enjoyed teaching for Norfolk Public Schools for the past five years, and since welcoming students into the building, my feelings have not changed. My heart leapt with joy when I saw my first group of students. A year ago, I would never have imagined that I would miss hearing my name called a million times a day, Ms. Collins, Ms. Collins, Ms. Collins, because they wanted to share something that mattered to them, and they knew that I cared to listen to them. I want you to know that I've noticed a positive shift in our district. The content is organized in thoughtful ways, and teachers are cared for. The district's and my principal's preparation for virtual instruction has been excellent and well-thought-out. Being in a new school and in a new grade level could have been very challenging if it were not for the amazing team at Ingleside. Our school has a team of highly qualified professionals who are always willing to share their best practices for distance learning, as well as what is working for them with virtual instruction. Daily, I feel empowered and inspired to create new ways of engagement to keep my students' interest from a distance. Teaching strategies have changed overall, which is just what we need to re-energize and reimagine learning. This district has started the work of reprioritizing the need for strong classroom communities and practices that offer equity for all scholars to positively impact education and student achievement. The vision is clear: connecting with students is key. It comes first. Throughout the pandemic, I focused on the value of relationships and the creation of innovative instruction. Typically, my Zoom sessions began five to 10 minutes before the start of class, and I would strike up a casual conversation about their weekend, upcoming events, and I would share a lot about my personal life. I would share funny stories. And the children just needed that social-emotional connection. They wanted to be connected to someone outside of their homes. So we spent a lot of time just laughing about my experiences and things that I was going through and things they were going through. Norfolk is also, another thing I've noticed, is that Norfolk is also investing in itself. I am benefiting from a current initiative, and I would like to take this time to express my gratitude for being accepted into the district-funded math specialist cohort. Thank you for your time, and at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Poe. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Balthazar and Ms. Collins. I appreciate sharing your experiences with us. At this time, my colleagues and I are prepared to answer any questions you may have.
First, I want to thank Dr. Balthazar and Ms. Collins for being here and for all the work that you've done, you know, all throughout the pandemic. And, you know, as we return to our classroom, no doubt, you know, our teachers and our principals have been just nothing short of amazing. So thank you for sharing your experience today and for all that you've done for our students. I do have some questions about the data that has been presented in the presentation. I appreciate the trend grade data that has been provided. I would like to know a little more about it. Do we have this data broken out by grade level so that we could see exactly, you know, what grade levels are having, I guess, the greatest struggle? Or can you speak to that at all?
So currently, the data is not broken out by grade level. Principals break it out by grade level at the building levels to be able to increase their focus points. However, our reporting doesn't have it down by grade level to that deep.
Okay. And then the difference between quarter one and quarter two, without seeing, you know, the ends, the sample sizes, are they the same student populations that you looked at, or could they be different?
So they would be the same student populations. You may have had a couple who may have had first quarter failed one and maybe failed two second quarter that came into the numbers at that point, but clearly, a drastic amount of students who were failing two, the numbers fell drastically from first to second quarter. But it was, so it's a total student population, so it would be the same subgroup of students.
Okay. And can you speak to how you're using this information or data to inform, you know, practices for the remainder of the school year, for the summer?
Absolutely. So I think, as we've stated before, we're really focusing on holistic data approach. So we're not just focusing on grades, but we're focusing on standards, on the Star Data Test, on the PALS, on the different data pieces and the formative assessments teachers are using in class. And we're really working with leaders and with teachers around how are we ensuring the students have an understanding to be successful, and how are we not holding them as accountable for an assignment that might not have been submitted? Because they may understand it, but there may have been a situation where they couldn't have submitted that assignment, or a struggle that we are unknown of. So we've really been working all year, including up to now, with focusing on the standards, understanding of the standards, and now that we're coming back to in-person, really working with students directly and more in small group to really find out what their knowledge base is as we close out the school year.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that. And my next question is around the VSA versus the in-person learning. I think, you know, just as other districts have done, it'd be helpful and useful for us to look at, you know, different demographic groups, just for our, I think, knowledge base. I think it's important to see, you know, who is it that is returning in person, especially as we, you know, when we do round out, you know, testing and other academic indicators and, you know, to be able to compare the in-person versus the virtual students, I think will be important. So, you know, that's something that I would really like to see, is the VSA versus in-person by demographic groups. And if we could have that by grade level, too, I think that would be helpful. And I know earlier in the year, we had a chart that was school by school that showed the VSA students versus in-person. So it'd be great to have that updated. And next, I appreciate the effort that went into putting the building ventilation dashboard together. Where exactly is that dashboard on the webpage?
So if you go into the return to in-person, the site, on the left-hand side, there's a list of buttons, and I believe, Ms. Matthews, it's on, one of those buttons is actually right there. So it's with every bit of information that we have with in-person learning.
Okay. Okay, great. The only thing I would say or ask about this is if there could be a description about what it means to have mechanical ventilation versus not mechanical ventilation, and what it means to be meeting the CDC guidelines. So what specific guidelines are we meeting? And have that, you know, so that, you know, as a parent, like, I know what they are, but I'm not sure that everyone knows what the guidelines are, which we know are also, they refer to the ASHRAE guidelines. So, you know, I think it's important to know what they are, and I know it might not be feasible to put in the dashboard exactly what the data is for those specific, for each item, but to at least know what the guidelines are so that we know what it is we're actually meeting, I think, would be important. And then this-
Ms. Bassine, if I may respond to that. We did define, like, what all of these terms mean. There's a narrative part before you get to all of the charts per school. We did provide that information, and we were thinking about this. You know, when a parent logs on, they're going to want to know, what does that mean, mechanical ventilation? Many of us had the same questions. And so we wanted to make sure that was clearly defined on the website so the layperson could understand what each of the charts mean.
Okay.
Yeah, it's there. I'm actually pulled it up and down to the classroom.
Okay. All right, great. And the other piece to that is, lost my train of thought. I'll come back to it. Just, all right. Well, I'll take a closer look at that, but thank you. That's it for now.
Any other questions for Dr. Poe? Jordan?
Not so much question, but recommendations for us to consider. So we were, during the governor's training, we were having discussions about the needs assessment and the work that we would be doing around our goals and guardrails. I'd just like to encourage us, as part of the academic data, so I know we have a couple of charts here, and typically, we will receive bar charts and district roll-up information. I think Ms. Bassine is speaking to some of the school-by-school data. I'd just like to encourage us, especially as we're looking at this needs assessment on the current data that we have that you mentioned, Dr. Poe, that if we can utilize some scattered plot data and other ways of representing the data that allows us to see not only how students are doing on a district roll-up basis, but also give us a snapshot and view and lens of how we're doing school by school, if that happens to be the case, or subgroup data. So I think that's an area where we can truly help the board get a good snapshot without getting too deep, but also have enough of a snapshot to be able to respond effectively to recommendations that we may receive as we move forward. I think it's going to be critically important as we consider, not just the summer, but really what our plans and actions will be as we start the new school year. The, I guess, a related question to that, then, maybe not for today, but at our next update, is really getting a sense of the virtual, the VSA program, and how it ties into the expectations that have been established around five-day in-person learning come September, and really having a good understanding as a board what the school division strategy is going to be as we deal with the realities of parents having the right to choose virtual instruction, but the default being in-person instruction, and how we intend to staff up, whether or not we consider, continue with one instructor doing both, or whether or not we're doing a cohort of teachers. I think we may have talked about very early on in the VSBA last, VSA last summer, that we may have some teachers who are just dedicated to that program. But I think it's going to be important for us to have a very good, solid understanding of how we intend to address that, and for the parents and the community at large to understand those options as we consider the fall. So those are my comments for now, but the data representation, I think, is something we definitely need to look at moving forward. Thank you.
Ms. Bassine, go ahead.
Yeah. Mr. Jordan's comment just now just reminded me what I was missing. So I had sent, a couple of weeks ago, I had sent Dr. Birdsong and board leadership some thoughts for consideration of how we might report out what I think I heard Mr. Jordan say, and what we actually talked about, I think, a little bit in closed session as it related to staffing, but really what our staffing and operational capacity is, including, you know, teachers or employees that, that would be VSA, would be in-person, how many, you know, are receiving ADA or FMLA? And those are things that we talked about and I think agreed on that would be good to have, you know, our finger on the pulse of what that looks like currently, but even as we then plan for next year, I think it's important for us to know what our retention, what our vacancy rate is, what our retention rate is, and so we can plan accordingly. So I'd like, you know, I just want to confirm support for that, if, from you all, to ask the administration if we could receive that data.
Go ahead, Dr. Birdsong.
I agree. We, the board did confirm that you did want that data, and Mr. Billis is prepared. He's currently working on that, and next week, I believe, he's going to be prepared to report out on that.
Okay, great. Great.
Sorry, I'm taking notes over here. Anyone else? Okay, Ms. Campson?
First of all, this is real quick, I'd just like to say that the most adorable part of the evening today, thank you very much, ladies. That was, perked me back up a little bit, so I really, it's always my best, always bring in some stories from the field, that's great. So I'd like now to remind everyone that we started today at 12, with 10 minutes or so, break at 4:00. It is now almost 7:00. I would like to propose that we stop and adjourn so we can refresh ourselves. Seven hours is a long day, and I would like to propose that we put a stop on it, and what's left over, we can always see again next week.
We actually, all we have is policy, and I'd like to do that so we can vote on it. We have a, at our 21st meeting.
Policy items are really high-level. I think there's one or two things-
Yeah.
Doesn't ever seem to end up that way.
Well, let's make it that way. We're going to take care of policy, and then we'll, it's just a little more time. That's the last item. Okay. No more questions for Dr. Poe? All right. Thank you very much, and also, again, thank you to Ms. Balthazar and Ms. Collins for being with us this evening, and thank you for all you're doing for Ingleside, the Ingleside Okay. Moving on to policy.
All right, and I promise to go quick, Ms. Campson. As Mr. Plannin said, most of them are very high-level changes due to policy KN had a change, and KN is in a lot of our different policies, so you'll see that throughout. The, a couple just high-level notes, and then any open discussion that we want to have. We recommend keeping the policy BDDHKD. However, we're recommending to make it a Z policy because ours is much different than VSBA. The policy GCQA is a new policy to Norfolk. The policy GCQA is a new policy to Norfolk. The regulation IGBZR is an updated regulation is all, we just wanted to make the board aware of it. Focuses around Title I and, and providing supports, how we're supposed to be providing supports. The, the big one would be policy JM, which we're bringing back to the board, which is restraint and seclusion of students. We're recommending a policy JMZ restraint of students. We have also gotten feedback from SEAC on this and we incorporated their feedback to redo the, to redo the policy that you see in, in the copies that we have here.
Just a moment. Did everybody get that, that email with the, with the, the letter from SEAC on seclusion and restraint?
Yes.
Everyone received that? Okay, just making sure. All right, go ahead, Dr. Poe.
All right. So, you'll notice that the, the policy JMZ has a lot more meat to it than what we initially brought, including definitions and several parts of, of what needs to happen within the division. Therefore, the procedures are much lighter now and those are just operational procedures as far as professional development, making the superintendent aware of, of when a student has been restrained and, and whatnot. Currently, our policy KGBZ is actually in line with VSBA, so we're recommending taking the Z off that policy. And then the changes to KN are pretty drastic, but that's, those are just code and law changes to that policy. And then KNA is being deleted because it's incorporated into KN. Those are really the high-level, major changes to any of the policy.
KNA is being deleted?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Mr. Jordan, go ahead.
Just out of, out of respect for Ms. Campson's request, just a couple of things. One, I, I wanted, I wanted to get some deeper discussion and maybe we can do that next week just around, yeah, I lost my, oh, the public participation at school board meetings. Just make sure we're in sync with that because I know we've kind of gone back and forth with that over the last year or so, so I just want to make sure that what is being recommended here is what indeed we intend to, to approve and then follow. I don't think in this, there was the, some draft changes that Attorney Cloud was making around the whole student discipline piece. That's not in here, correct?
That has not been reviewed with PRC at this point.
Okay. And then the last thing, there was a policy in here dealing with media, media relations and I think we had some previous policies dealing with the use of social media. When we had the, I know we've had some discussions over the past years dealing with social media, school board, employees, others, as well as some of the recommendations and discussions that came out of the communications audit. So, is it, I didn't see any of that there, so I didn't know if it's possible to maybe ask if the policy committee would go back and at least do some additional assessment based upon some of the issues. I think Attorney Cloud had sent us a couple of emails, some legal guidance, where we're dealing with things with media and social media and then also just trying to make sure, go back and review anything that we had in that communications audit that may have some relevance for us, for us here. So, I don't know if you all discussed that or not, but if, if it makes sense what I'm bringing forward. KBC.
KBC.
And I can't remember, there's some other policies that we have that also speak to like media and social media. So, I just want to make sure we can try to-
And I can, I can-
Talk it out at one time.
And I can speak to the fact, Ms. Matthews and I have talked about those policies as well and her, her and her team are reviewing them closely and looking at other possibilities to include those in the future too.
If, if it's nothing urgent as far as the law is concerned, is that something that we can just defer that until you all have an opportunity to hear further on that?
Okay.
Thank you.
Just, can I just ask a clarifying question? So, so if I heard you correctly, you're asking to defer KBC?
Yes.
KBC in particular, but I, I didn't know, I just know that as we've done this before, there have been other policies that will reference different pieces of media.
Right.
So, I just wanted to try to make sure that we could, make sure that all that stuff is aligned and do it in one fell swoop if there's anything to do versus, versus piecemeal it.
And, and there are no legal changes to this? It's just a cross-reference and symbol language changes? So, I'm, I'm happy to table that when we can further discuss.
Thank you.
Okay. So, public participation in school board meetings, do we want to discuss that at the-
I just, I just want to make sure that, that, because we've, we've made some changes, I think, a couple of times, so I just want to make sure that you all are saying that what we have here fits with what we're going to do and what we have been doing.
Yeah, we, we had an in-depth discussion about that and pretty much a reference of other policy, which is agenda planning. And then because of our detailed agenda planning process, which states that the chair and vice chairman, the superintendent meet to set the agenda, you all can place whatever items are in there where we want them to be, so we're in alignment. So, however you set the agenda, i.e., when we talked about public comment and so forth, if it was at a beginning or end, that's up to you as the, and which is in total alignment. So, we had an in-depth conversation with them.
So, is there anything else that we need to discuss about it?
No, if I just, if you're comfortable with it-
All right, then we'll keep it as is and then it's just KBC will be deferred. So, any other questions or comments? Great, thank you very much. The next thing on the agenda is future agenda items.
Madam Chair, for the purposes of time, I'd like to move to adjourn and ask that board members send them by email since we're going to meet next week.
That's fine. I mean, feel free to email me.
Yeah, we can just email them because we're going to be meeting together next week. Is that cool?
Email me future agenda items.
If we do that without, can you just copy the full board? We won't, we won't do any back and forth, so we don't create a meeting, but just that way everybody knows what's being requested.
I have a list of future agenda items, so we'll see how it matches up. I might already have it on my list. Okay, with that, thank you, everyone. I know it's been a long day. Please be safe on your journey home and meetings adjourned.